Okay, item C is public appearances. We have one public appearance, Janice Stone wants to talk about staffing for music and elementary-related arts.
Hello, so my name is Janice Stone and I live at thirty seven thirty one Crestview Drive in Cottage Grove. And I'm speaking to you kind of in part for Pat Dorn, who can't be here right now, but he's coming later. I'm speaking to bring to your attention a request for staffing in the music and related arts areas. Earlier this spring, the Glacial Drumline Music Department got together and we met to discuss what we felt were the staffing needs, so that we could adequately meet the needs of all of our students. We collaboratively developed a staffing plan which Pat Dorn then presented. He's our coordinator and he presented it to Dan and Renee. And he felt the meeting was positive and we were hopeful that you guys would hear about the request. And we were disappointed when that didn't happen. So then after the referendum passed, we were like, well, you know, hopefully now you guys will hear about this staffing plan. And I was really hopeful that I would see it on tonight's agenda and I don't see it there even though I do see a lot of other staffing proposals. The music staffing proposal is not even one FTE and it addresses issues in band, choir, orchestra, and general music at both Glacial Drumline and Cottage Grove School. And so it would address a host of problems. It would allow for teaming at choir like we have in band and orchestra. And it would be beneficial for students. It's frustrating not to be able to meet everyone's needs due to a lack of time and, I mean, students' needs. I have copies of the proposal if anyone would like to see them and Pat Dorn will be coming later if people have questions. It's demoralizing to see new staffing requests being approved in other areas and at other schools. And even new classes that we've never had before being approved and being brought to you guys. And there are still cuts that had to happen six years ago and I get that. But we would really appreciate it if you would consider undoing the cuts. The music department took significant cuts at a time when funding was tight and now that we've passed the referendum, we'd really like to have a discussion with you about undoing them. I count seven new proposals on this agenda alone, not including the previous agenda. And that just doesn't feel comfortable when we really feel like we are very pressed to meet the needs of our students. Another group of teachers that's in this same boat is the elementary-related arts teachers. Once again, six years ago, they had their workload increased, their minutes that they teach, so they teach more students and more classes every day. And over the past three years, they've met with administration to discuss this and discuss why they would like that to be revisited as well. Once again, it impacts their ability to do what they had been able to do for years for students and now aren't able to do the same things due to their increased workload. Jeremy and I will be discussing it with Dan on Monday, but I wanted to bring that to your attention as well, that it's another area where people are feeling overwhelmed. And, you know, it's frustrating not to be the best teacher that you can be simply because of the lack of time. And that's, I guess, kind of where we're at. So anyway, I just wanted to bring forward that there are some issues that we would love if you would take up in the future. So thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments.
Susan?
Janice, could you, would you tell us again? Based on the information I have, you guys are presently staffed at seven point seven oh FTE?
That is prob- I'm sure that's right.
And then, I guess, what I'm looking at is kind of the difference and then looking at changing to eight point five nine, which is, Peter, you do this faster than I do.
I think it's like a point seven or something-ish.
Point, point eight nine.
Eight, point eight nine.
Okay.
It's about point nine, it's about, yeah.
I am not a math person.
Less than a one point. And you would target that effectively at which, which of those areas?
Well, it addresses, it addresses an issue of the fourth grade strings job at Cottage Grove School is only allotted for the number of teaching minutes, but it's the initial, it's the initial entrance of over a hundred kids and parents every year into the program. And so there are so many things that that job entails, I know because I did it for four years. There's a lot of parent contacts, there's parent meetings. You have to like get all these kids into the program and every time there's something new, it's a big deal to that group of parents, once they're in the program, then it's a little bit easier. So we're asking that that be not just considered the number of teaching, like the FTE for the teaching minutes, but hopefully increase it a little bit so that that person doesn't feel overwhelmed. Because we have had quite a few people do that job. And if we had it at a, like, a point five FTE, maybe we could keep someone in that job for a while, which would be cool.
Well, it looks to me like it, that's already at point three six. And I think actually that's one we talked about not too long ago that was a point three six. So again, the difference there is point one four. I mean, that's all you're asking for in that area. And then off the top of your head to the...
So then choir, so in band and orchestra, we team teach. It is a really great way to be able to reach students. So either, so one person is like leading the class and the other person is either helping by playing along with kids or adjusting a kid's posture, or maybe we do a sectional or I have Jeff take all the trumpets out, or maybe Carl has Maureen take the violins out. So we can break into groups or we can have everybody in the room together and have two people working on it because we do have larger groups of students. But choir doesn't have that opportunity. And so we really hope that the choir program will be treated equally with the band and orchestra program by allowing team teaching, you know, in all grades, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. Because now it's impossible for one choir teacher to assess kids. There's no one to test them, voice test them, or help them get ready for solo ensemble contests. I mean, there's a lot of things that they could do really well if there were two people in the room.
So you're, I mean, you're really addressing, having looked at what you do and how you teach it and how you can teach it to these students better. And incidentally, you need more staff to be able to do that in a more group, individualized, which is one of our main goals in the district is individualized, addressing individualized learning.
Yeah, I mean, choir, when they have a kid who can't match pitch and you have forty-five kids in the room, there's no way one teacher can help that one kid who can't match pitch. But if they could send them out of the room with the other teacher even for ten minutes and work on them and help them with that skill, then, I mean, it's only one student, but it makes a big difference to that one student.
The thing is, the research is very clear that music improves academic achievement.
What, pursuing Susan?
Before we get, I'm sorry, we shouldn't have a discussion about this. We can ask questions about, we can ask questions about Janice, probably of Janice, to clarify the issue. But we really, because we're not agendaists.
Well, let me, let me ask a question then.
Sure.
I'll begin like I was starting, following up on Susan's question there. She defined, she got some definition of the previous one as a point one four. What, what does this? What would this mean in terms of addition? Is it a spra fraction? Is it a total?
Point eight nine is what I...
Is the total for all of them? I mean, I have it, like, Pat put this together very nicely, if you guys would like copies of it, I can give them to you.
Do you have any?
Yeah.
So it's, it would, not sure we put it on the front. He has present staffing levels on the front, which is seven point seven, and then at the, on the back, it would totally be point eight nine.
Yes.
So we're also asking to return band to the three FTEs that we had before the staffing cuts. Right now, I split between band and strings. And so we're asking to restore that as well, that's another part of the puzzle. So there's all, all pieces of the puzzle. I mean, right now, people are just going in many directions and it's hard to be focused on what we're doing.
Well, and Peter, procedurally, I don't know, again, Janice may have already scheduled to be here this time, but procedure, clearly, we are agendaists, we talk about this on the agenda, but not at this location. So when we talk about the staffing, this can definitely be discussed during the staffing session.
Pat will be here later, he's at rehearsal right now.
Right, Susan?
And I have a question, well, a couple of questions. One, could this plan be created with existing staff? Or I, I think we're still looking for a new music staff, I think, because I think, I'm not sure. In other words, would we have to go out and hire somebody additionally to fill this? Or given, we may be hiring an additional music person anyway, which I think I saw go by on the staffing request, but that's just to fill what we have now. Could the existing staff plus that person do this? I mean, we're not looking at, looking for, not looking at hiring another person for like a point two or something like that to make this work. Or a point, it wouldn't be a point two, I guess.
The way that it's set up, if we could find a vocal strings person, that person could do, I mean, yes, I think you could do it with one or possibly two hires and they wouldn't be like point one eight.
That's what I'm trying to ask, I guess, not very artfully. If we can do it with the people we're planning on hiring so far, just by increasing the time somewhere, maybe.
I believe that is correct, once again, Pat put this together.
Yeah, that'd be one question, I guess, I'd want to have an answer to. And then, I guess, across, and then the other issue is scheduling. Because I know their schedules have been laid out and why, I don't know how.
It actually makes scheduling easier if we have more people.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, I don't believe that this would create a staffing problem. Like, having more people wouldn't create, I don't believe, I am not the scheduling expert, so I would bow to someone else's expertise in that area, but I don't believe it would cause a problem.
Dean?
I would, I would just like to say, I think, I think the board made, could be sympathetic to this, but I don't see it in a manageable form in terms of, I think Susan was, was driving at this, whether it's internal, shifting things around, or external, or some combination of it, because I don't see point eight people walking around. And, and I, you know, I'd like to see some, I'd like to see some alternatives that, at least as a board member sitting here, that we could manage and make a decision, yea or nay, that would be.
So I think I can, I think I can summarize it. The Cottage Grove fourth grade strings position would be a position and it would be, you know, a point five by itself. So like, if you go to the second page, if you guys have this. Okay, anybody wants one? I mean, like, like, that would be a point five position and then we could hire a strings. Do you know, anybody else? Strings vocal person for like a one point oh FTE, so on the second page. And then we already have people that could do the teaming. Orchestra would remain the same, I would just stop teaching strings and be full-time band. And I think we would have to do something with general music, but we were going to have to do that anyway. And because of the overlap in the schedule. So I think it would be hiring possibly two people.
Well, and Janice, just to clarify, Dean was talking about the point FTE pieces and it seemed to voice some concern about that. Actually, you've heard from people with those FTEs not too recently. But the fourth grade strings presently is a point three six.
Right.
The fifth grade strings is a point three oh. So the, there's a band that's a two point seven. So in the music area, you already, we, you already have part-time FTEs.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm kind of part of two departments. Janet Heinemann this year is part of two departments, so yeah, we already kind of have that.
Okay. Janice, thank you and thank you for the documents.
Thank you.
I was, there's one thing I would like to see, actually that would be helpful, very helpful to me and the board would be comparables. Do you think you can, is there any way you can get some information that way?
I will share my favorite story. One of my former student teachers who teaches in Oregon, her entire job is teaching sixth grade band, that's all she does. They have another band teacher who just teaches fifth grade band. We could do better with our staffing, but I can try to put that together.
That would be, that'd be very, that kind of information is always very helpful too. Thank you, Janice.
Those are hard though.
Oh, I know, it's a difficult thing.
You get your number of students.
Yeah, I know, it's a difficult, it is a difficult thing to do, I understand that, but it's...
Well, but sometimes, Peter, I think it's important to understand that we've done innovative things. And one of the things we did is we've gone to team teaching and we've supported that as a district. We did that in the middle school and that's exactly what Janice is talking about. So if you want to take the principal's job and say, by the way, I want to, everybody that's not teaching the music, I mean, again, I'm deferring to them because they're the experts in this area. And we have in fact advocated and used team teaching in the school district and the middle school. So unless there are reasons to change that and Renee came in and said, I want to change that, then I wouldn't expect to see that happen. And I certainly wouldn't then ask a teacher to bring me comparables of all the other districts if in fact they've already studied that and feel that works for them.
I understand. Item D, a consent agenda, I'd like a motion for a rule of consent agenda.
So move.
Remove, is there a second?
Second.
Remove the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Just because we just read all those nice descriptions of all the officers and one of the things that was printed on the page of every single PowerPoint for every office was the ethical obligation of board members to vote. And even though this is a pretty perfunctory thing, it does continue to bother me a little bit that people don't vote on things. And I, I'm just going to, that's all, just want to mention that, okay?
Item E, hang on a second, item E, recognition information. Dan, recognition?
Yeah, I'm going to begin and I actually have four students I'd like to recognize. I had the opportunity this week to attend a luncheon sponsored by the Eastside Optimist Club where they, actually, take it back, it was sponsored by the Downtown Optimist Club, but they as well partnered with a number of the area optimist clubs to recognize students at several of the Madison area schools. And so we were fortunate enough to have four of our students recognized, two from Monona Grove High School and two from MG twenty-one. Again, I had the opportunity to be present during this recognition. And so the students that were recognized from Monona Grove High School are Sarah Schuster and Blong Phong. And the presenter was Kevin Grahn, one of our high school counselors. And then from MG twenty-one, we had Kenny Hyman and Gabby Winterton that were recognized as well for their work. And Ian Lowe was present to give their presentation. So it was a wonderful program, there were, I believe, seven different high schools that represented it at the program. And, and the criteria was, it was again about some of the wonderful things these students have done. It wasn't purely academic, but, you know, volunteerism and so on, the beat of, of basically, you know, what the optimists are about. So congratulations to those four students.
Any other? Why, would you come up to the chairs so that the microphones can pick you up?
Let me just sit down.
That would actually be best.
I love this seat, by the way. First off, I wanted, next week starts the Cottage Grove Art Gallery Walk, so it's a two-week event. Parents are welcome to come at any time, we actually encourage parents to come during the school day if they're available just to see what's happening at Cottage Grove day to day. Also, the playground installation is underway, starts tomorrow, rain or shine. So we've had quite a lot of projects. Number one, they took down the old equipment two weeks ago. And so being creative, kind of went back to old-school model of recess. There's no playground equipment, so the kids have had to be quite creative and they've done a nice job with that because they know sort of what the surprise is coming. A personal note, I'd like to thank the board. I really appreciate the cards, the flowers, and also plants that you've sent to me for my recent loss of my mother. It's been very heartfelt and it makes me feel exactly what I've always known about Monona Grove. It's another example of a family. So thank you for that and I've worn a lot of purple lately, it's mom's favorite color. So people are asking me now, what's your favorite color, Mr. Foster? Purple. I say, well, not really, but it's my mom's, so a tribute to her, so, but thank you, appreciate it.
Ann Prince, right?
What's that?
Ann Prince?
Yeah.
Okay. Item F, correspondence and announcements.
None?
Oh, did you, I'm sorry. Dan, you and Dean attended a wonderful presentation by one of our staff members who's gone to India.
Oh, sure, I can comment on that, thank you. Kimmy Hilton, and maybe, God, anyone wants to chime in as well. Kimmy Hilton is a special ed teacher at Taylor Prairie School. And she had an opportunity, and I forget the name of the organization that she works with, but it's something peace-related and she had not, I, that was in the title somewhere. She spent about two weeks in India this spring. It's part of this group and it worked out really well timing-wise. Part of it was during her spring break, but we were able to, you know, make work with her schedule to go as well. And she came back and she gave a really nice presentation about, you know, the events and what she learned from it. And it's one of those things that was not strictly education-related that it was, but certainly those sorts of cultural events absolutely have an impact on her staff. And I know she's brought back things that will be a positive contribution, not only to Taylor Prairie School, but perhaps the district as well. So I'd certainly give Kimmy a lot of credit, it was a very impressive presentation. She's a very impressive, you know, young lady and we're really thrilled and excited to have her on our staff.
It was the Global Youth Leadership Forum.
Thank you.
She was a former U.S. dance troupe at the World Cultural Festival, sorry. We all got an email, so I just looked it up, I cheated.
And yet, I would say again, the staff invited us, because you always feel a little funny walking in the door.
She did invite us, and that's why, that's why I just looked it up. So, we do appreciate being invited, I'm sorry.
We really do.
But glad that you guys did.
I applaud it because I've, I see that right under the Monona Grove School, we always have this vision. And it has the word global in there, but I think global is conspicuously vacant in a lot of what we talk about and what we do. But this is a good example of getting that in, I would like to see more of it. Institutionalize, and this is a start, rather than atomize it, we can institutionalize it now. Start with Kim.
Okay, item G, administrative reports, number one, administrative reports.
Okay, I have one item and, and I've given you some real preliminary information previously about a discussion we've been having about a possible charter school at the elementary level. And so I wanted to give a little bit more detail tonight publicly and let you know where we're at in the process. And I would say that we're still very much in the investigation stages about, is this something, number one, that would benefit the students in the Monona Grove School District, what would be the exact purpose and so on. I have, I've attached on the board docs, a document that was put together that is our starting point, titled Progressive Education and a Whole Student Approach. Give a lot of credit to a parent group that actually basically started this idea. And Monzi Brown is one of the parents that has kind of helped organize this. And then she's brought in a person by the name of Heather Terrell Stotts, who works with the School Innovation Network. She's done work with MG twenty-one in the past, very well-respected organization and has worked with a number of schools throughout the state. And so at this point, we're very interested in find, again, pursuing the idea, is this something that, number one, could benefit our students, second, is it feasible? Do we have space, what would the cost be and so on? And so we're in that point that we're ready to kind of take the next step and put together a planning team to really dig in and be more specific about what exactly would be the purpose of the school. In the meantime, Jared is working, you know, with Jeff Cowherd to look at the facility piece and what those costs might be. And so our plan is to continue this study from basically now through the fall. And I'll keep you updated as we move along. But if it does continue to proceed, that it actually would come to the board for recommended approval, we're looking as early as the fall of a recommendation that would allow us to open for the fall of 2017. We need almost a year in advance because the way the timing would work is that we would first want to make sure that we made our parents in the district aware of this opportunity and we'd want to have an early registration to find out about parent interest. Because then, depending on that interest, you would want to be able to have the open enrollment window available to allow non-resident students to fill seats, you know, should there be that existed. So in order to do that, we're really thinking, at the latest, we need board approval by November in order to get that planning done for the residents and then open enrollment, you know, in January. So that would be a goal, it's by no means set in stone. It's not that it would have to be on that timeline, it could go another year. But we think that by that time, we should be able to go through our planning to determine whether or not it is truly feasible or not. There certainly would be some resources that would need to go into place in order for the planning. If you recall, and some of you were a part of this, before I arrived in the district, there was work done on a possible, actually, middle charter school. And at that time, DPI had grant money available for planning grants in which, to help fund the organization and planning. And I believe the district applied but was not accepted for that planning grant. And given the tight budgets, there really wasn't any money to go further and investigate. Those planning grants do not currently exist, so there is no support on the planning. We would have to do that ourselves. Those planning grants generally were for about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. In looking at this and talking to Heather, you know, from the School Innovation Network, we're quite certain we don't need a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do planning. It would be, it could be a significant cost, perhaps as much as up to fifty thousand though, with, you know, having people come in and doing curriculum work and all that sort of thing. So again, before any money would be spent, we would come back to the board. You would have to approve the authorization of that as well, you know, for any of the resources that would occasion planning. So at this point, we're doing it internally. I wanted to, again, now kind of publicly announce that we have notified staff that we're starting this planning in our last staff newsletter, we just made mention of it. We will be sending out a survey shortly to all staff to find out, first of all, we want to know what staff might be interested in being part of this planning team and then ultimately, obviously, to even, you know, perhaps be a teacher and that sort of thing. So we've created a survey that we'll be finalizing to go out to staff about potential interests, even ideas. We want to know what our staff thinks about what our student needs might be as well that could be met through a charter school that we currently maybe are more challenged to meet through our traditional schools. So I would say in this next month is when we really want to start ramping up and kind of gathering this information. And then I would expect by the beginning of the summer, probably come into proposal with the board for any resources that we might need in order to put this together. It potentially might mean hiring on a school innovation networks for consulting to help lead us through the process. But that's something, again, we'll come to the board for approval before we would commit to something like that.
Dean?
Right, when I early came on the board, I was kind of on the team, less as a worker than observer and that sort of thing, and the last one. I think that the, I've, I've met with, with these, these two women and they're very, very knowledgeable, very skilled, they bring a lot, they bring a lot to it. And, but I would just caution that while the time looks like there's plenty of time, I think one of the, one of the unanticipated problems that we ran into on the other one, it seemed like everything was worked, but there's, there seems to me there's about four months of things to be done in the last thirty days on that one. And I think to some extent, that probably accelerated, did maybe hurt the quality of the other one. So I would encourage, you know, really proceeding as if it were more like tomorrow than a long time from now. And also getting, you might benefit by, by getting someone, one, maybe two at most, from that other team to kind of give them, Pat Hollow was on that team, she was a good contributor to it.
Patty McGinnis.
And Patty McGinnis.
Yeah, the news are right.
Yeah, okay, but, but one or two people, not, not to tell them how to do it, but to maybe just, just kind of monitored along their way and...
Pull up the old stuff and show the structure.
Yeah, and that would be, but I, I encourage it, I think it's a good...
I just, and I think it's a great idea, honestly, anyone that can provide an important resource would be important. But keep in mind, this is a very different thing. That group was writing a proposal to DPI for approval, we don't need to do that in this case. That was for a planning grant. What we are doing, for DPI approval, we basically just need to tell them that we're doing it. There's not that strict approval process that there was for the planning grant.
Well, that's good to know.
So...
I guess also, and maybe you said something about this, but are you surveying parents so we'll have? I mean, it's hard because to get parents, see how much parent interest there is when you have just a proposal. I get, I get a lot of this and I think it's a really neat idea, but, so you find out how many parents might be interested and then, then you have to go to the next step to sort of flesh it out more to find out how many people are really interested before we really commit to it, I think, so we know, are we talking eight people or twenty kids or? So is that... So is that, is that part of the plan?
It is. We've talked about that, about what is the right timing to start contacting parents about interest. Honestly, we have to have enough done to give a good idea about what this would really be about. But you're right, we can't wait until the very end. We have to have an idea, is there really an interest there or not?
And there's something laid out here that would give people something, but, you know, they might say, yeah, we might be interested, but we need to hear more.
Yeah.
And one, you know, I guess, and maybe doing a survey too early is not worthwhile. And they have to have more laid out. I don't know. I would defer to the people who've done this before.
Yeah. And mentioned, Heather's been great. She has done this, and she's kind of a key resource.
Yeah, I know. I had a question.
So, a question about structure. As a charter, would it be similar to MG21 in that it would have its own board?
If it were a charter school, yes. Actually, by law, it would have to have its own governing board. Yeah. So there would be a charter.
And through your current discussions, is there a way to point to other schools or charters in the Dane County area that are similar in programming?
Not so much in the Dane County area. Statewide, yes. Waukesha County in particular has several models that we've looked at. There are some in Dane County. Verona has a couple charter schools. And so certainly, yes, I've actually talked to Dean Gurel from Verona as well about the process they went through. So we'll certainly look at locally, but probably more a little bit expanding further out to help us kind of guide what this would be. And actually, to your point, would it have to be a charter school? There's no money that comes with it to be a charter school. The one thing normally about charter schools is that it allows you to not have to follow all of the DPI and regulations and so on. And so that's what we still need to determine. Does it need to be a charter school? And we thought.
Alternative programming.
Exactly. Yeah. So that would be one of the pieces and, as well.
Dean?
Well, they, well, it seems to me, what you're saying, there's, there's no extra money that comes from it. It seems to me that, what are you getting from DPI? You're basically allowing, you're allowing them to excuse you from the imposition of certain state mandates and your own local policies.
Exactly.
And that's what they often look for in that, because they're looking for a degree of independence from state statutes and from local board policies. And while there's not money coming, so what Susan pointed out, you need people, and then you need to decide what policies there are so that this independent governing board can operate. Is that basically it?
That's exactly right. And that's one of the first questions we need to answer, is do we need that independence in order to do this school? You know, I think we probably do, but that's, we need to flesh that out yet.
Carrie?
I read the document and was wondering, just the broader brush of this, what is the need that's not being met right now that this would mean? Because when I looked at the categories, fostering engagement, healthy eating, movement during the day, I thought, well, this is all stuff we really want to be doing for all kids. So who are you going to peel off that we're going to do this for, where we're not going to then be doing these things? So I was hoping you would do the broader, how many kids, what is the need for this?
That is a great question.
And why aren't we just doing these awesome things for all of our kids?
You have hit the nail on the head. You're absolutely right. The things that are in here would be good for all kids. But when we talked about it, to the extent to really do this well, it's kind of like with MG21. We've talked often about some of the great innovative things that they're doing, we should be able to mirror some of those things in our regular high school. Because of the scale and the number of students, it's not nearly as easy as it is with, when you're working with 45 students and three teachers. And it's kind of the same idea here, is that this would be an opportunity to really make sure that that is the focus, and perhaps some of those things as well might carry on to the other schools. But because of the scale and just the way the system is, it's not necessarily as easy. And I apologize, I can't really give you specifics, but kind of that broad thing, I guess that's the difference between.
When I was asking it from the perspective of what's the need that's being targeted with this, or who's the audience, so I could get a better feel, it was really helpful for me to understand with MG21, there's a clear audience being served there that otherwise wasn't being served well in the district. And I felt great about that when I learned about what we're doing at MG21. When I read this proposal, there's nothing in here that tells me who, what children aren't we serving right now that this would serve.
Yeah.
Do you have a feel for that?
I, I do. I don't know if you want to comment.
Well, one, I just had a brief conversation with a person from Innovative Learning about it, and she talked to me a little bit about, I think there was a little more about project-based learning, which I'm not seeing in here so much, but I'm reading into this, that if you're going to structure with this, that's probably what you're talking about. And that is different, and that does require smaller numbers. The other big thing that jumps out here is limited use of technology. I mean, that's opposite of what we're doing in our school. So it is different. It's a different philosophy. And in the increasing time and nature, I mean, I having, I went to a bunch of green charter school meetings prior to the last charter effort here. And it really does involve a different way of structuring your day, to answer your question, Carrie. I think, so there are possibilities, and this is coming from some parents who are interested. And that's why I asked the question, and it remains to be seen yet, how many kids are, you know, how many parents are really interested in seeing this? Because I, I am, when I read this, I do see a different structure in order to enhance all of this that you couldn't do during a normal, the way we structure our classes, and it's smaller numbers of kids.
Sure. And this is still written fairly broadly. We would definitely have to get much more specific about what those exact things were that, to answer that question, what, that we could do here that perhaps we can't in the other. Susan gave a couple great examples with that. One of the other things we talked about is perhaps multi-age classrooms, as opposed to, you know, traditional graded. And that's something as well, that, yes, it can be done in a traditional school. Obviously, it's a lot easier to work into.
I mean, the things you're talking about, the multi-age classroom, sort of, and all these things, these are statements of things we'd like to do, might be good ideas, but what Carrie's question is, and I think, a question has to come first, yeah, multi-age, what's the need for multi-age?
It basically comes back to personalized learning, meeting the individual needs of every child.
Okay. So what, so what's the need in the district? I don't want an answer right now. What's the need in the district? How many students would be better served by this than are currently served? And if it's all of them, well, we better find a way to do this for everybody instead of these.
That was my, yes.
But, and so, and so first you identify the needs, and second of all, you identify the purposes. If the need is, we want to implement, if this is to pilot some of these practices, then the, then that, you know, I mean, the need is one of these practices, we want, the purpose then is to pilot, becomes to pilot these for those children, that's just one structure that's different from, well, we have a population of students that we'd better serve this way. So that would be part of the purpose, serve this population of students, or better serve all the students. You know, those are two different purposes. And I could see them going, this proposed, these kind of things, trying to, you know, being used either way in this, in this proposed school. And, and again, just those two examples you would set up, in my mind, you would set up a structure very difficult. If you're a charter school, when I say a charter school, if you're just trying to service a population, if you're trying to pilot it for the rest of the district, then maybe you want a structure that's much more integrated than the rest of the district. Because right now, I think we have a problem with MG21, which I do a lot of great things, but I think it is hard for us to sort of take that, those lessons to the high school. I don't think we, I don't think we take full advantage of that, and I think we don't do that because we don't have the integration. They've got such a, such a infrastructure. So I think identifying the needs in a strong, in a clear statement is first, and then the second thing is identifying the purpose. And then we can go back and look at, how does this thing, which talks about the progressive education problem, how does that fulfill that purpose? Because I think you'd have to do those things first, and I don't see, and I'd like to see those questions, needs and purposes first, before we go on to the next step and try to answer these. These are, these are answers. In my mind, they're still in search of purpose and needs, because I haven't seen the purpose and needs. Jeff?
One thing about the limited screen time, I looked at some of their links, I didn't research them. But a lot of it was iPhones, right? And that's leaps and bounds different than getting an iPad and doing a lesson. So I don't know that, you know, that seems a little misleading to me. I mean, I think, I think kids need screen time nowadays.
I would agree. I personally wouldn't say technology-free, there's a time and place for it.
Right. And also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious where, I mean, obviously, space has been something we've talked about nonstop for months and months and months. Where would, where is there, I mean.
Yeah. Great question. I should have mentioned that. What we're investigating, the initial thought is the Nichols Building. We have currently eight classrooms that are not being utilized for storage. And so that's what, again, Jeff and Jared are looking at right now about, okay, what would it take to make those operational? You know, we know that, that they are, but there's still some things that need to be done, you know, there. So that would be the first thing, is could that space be utilized? As far as the actual number of classrooms and the number of potential students, if we have one, you know, class per grade, yes, that would seem to fit.
Then we'd have to bus.
Well, not necessarily. For resident students, yes, absolutely. If we, if we were opening it up to all residents, no question about it, you would treat it like any other school, and you would bus. Yeah, so that would be expensive, well.
Well, and, I'm sorry.
Dean?
I would like to see us begin to encourage them to develop this, because what they're proposing is very common type of preschool and early school education in many countries that have high-performing school systems. The Finnish school system, the Danish school system, the Swedish school system has from three years old right up into that, something that is described there. So it is not, so Peter, I would disagree with you to say that we need to find a need. To some extent, it's an opportunity to explore in a new, in a new direction, of which many people may not recognize the need, but may see an opportunity, because they have not experienced what this opportunity may give. I'm making myself clear. Because I, you know, it's, because it's not within the experience of most adults in the U.S. to have experienced the occasional preschool and the occasional primary school to see what is possible here in a completely, in this environment.
I'm not saying that there isn't a need. I'm saying that we need a statement of need. We need to, we need to explicitly express what those needs are.
Well, and I think by having some of the parents come in when they get down the road over, would be helpful, because they can explain that. Clearly, there is, there are some parents who do feel there's a need, and so we maybe just need to hear from them when they've thought it through. And I, I also don't see a problem in the fact that MG21 functions as a separate charter school, and we aren't able to carry over some of their practices into our main high school. I think that's the whole point. The whole point of a charter school is that they can operate very differently, and part of why they can operate differently is because of their flexibility from some of the regulations and from some of our policies, but also their size. And their teacher-student ratio is very different than in our main school. And so while we might be able to take some lessons, we would never expect to replicate what they do, nor would I like to see them get too large where they can't keep doing what they're doing. So I, I think that is a legitimate, charter schools, to me, serve a couple purposes. Sometimes they do serve as a testing lab for innovative practices. Other times, they do serve simply a separate, different way of doing things. And whenever you're talking about project-based learning, you, you really can't have more than 20 kids in a class. I mean, that's like the absolute max in general, when you read the research on that. We do have a private school in the Madison area, Winger School, which operates as a progressive school, which has some similar philosophies to this. That would be potentially another resource. And they operate very differently. They have two teachers to a classroom with a max of 20 kids. More of a similar ratio to what we have in our MG21. I think that's great, and it's nice to have these opportunities. I think we probably just need to hear more from the parents about what they have in mind. So I, yeah, I'd like, I agree, we should encourage them to flesh out some more thoughts and then maybe come answer some of those questions for us. I think would be great.
Carrie?
Well, just to restate, the question I was getting at is about what population isn't being served that would be served by this? And if the question is every single elementary school kid that we have would be served by this, that may not be a narrow enough demographic to, to deal with. I mean, if you put this in front of any parent, and one, and just picking this one that's on my screen right now, encourage healthy eating, and you said we want to test parents' interest in this, what parent, could you put it in front of that encourage healthy eating doesn't seem like something we want for their kid?
That's why we need to more flesh out. There's more to it than that, I'm sure.
But I mean, that's the part that I was missing, looking at this right now, is that there wasn't anything narrow enough to say, oh, I see what population would be served by this that we're not serving right now in our school.
Well, I think that's only part of it. It's also about just providing a choice for parents and an opportunity that they believe might be the type of learning environment, you know, for their child. So the reality is, we have a group of parents that have identified that this, they believe, would be a better, you know, learning opportunity for their children than our traditional schools. And I think it warrants further investigation. We have an empty building. That's as far as we are. These are all great questions. That's why we need a planning team to answer all these questions.
Or you could get 500 elementary school kids and say, yeah, this is what we want.
Usually, it means giving up something else, which is why they won't all do that. That's the point.
Yeah. So it's trying to figure that out. You can't tell from this.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
I'll try to be brief, because I know we want to move along. I just, it's, Carrie, I appreciate your question. The piece that comes to my mind immediately are, for instance, the reading minutes that are required per day, the math minutes that are required per day, and what our elementary teachers, you know, I mean, it's a very rigorous day, just keeping on task, on minutes, chop, chop, chop. And that does not mean that's how they deliver it.
Right.
It simply means that's how their day ends up being constructed. And so I'm intrigued with the idea, if you no longer are required by DPI to meet those minutes, right? How else can you structure the day? And in what ways then are you actually delivering numeracy and literacy? What does that look like?
Yeah.
And ultimately then, skills is the point, right? I mean, that's pushed now anyway. So what is the skills performance? And what are the other ways in which that's going to be tracked and mapped, et cetera? So it's not fleshed out yet, but those are questions that come to my mind when you talk about what's different, what's offered, who's, right, what are the needs? So I'm intrigued to see more of that articulated as it goes forward.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Next on the agenda is Jared, Director of Business Services, Safety, Security, and Facilities Report. Jared and Jeff. Or maybe just Jeff.
So Jeff is actually, has been taking the lead for us on this, and he's been working with the building administrators and district administrators on walking through our safety and security. One of the things that we had done a couple years ago, he'll speak to, is we had an assessment of individual coming in and walking through and giving some ideas of, you know, what we could do to improve. From that assessment, we did do some upgrades to our front entrances, all of our front entrances here, but I'll let Jeff walk through what we've done and what the next couple of phases look like.
All right, thank you. In 2013, January 2013, the district contracted with the National School Safety Center to complete a school safety and security threat assessment of all schools. The purpose of this assessment was to review current policies pertaining to school crime prevention, review the district's security and crisis plans, and then to make recommendations from the assessment. So what I'm going to kind of discuss with you tonight is a little bit of an evaluation of the status of where the district is with that assessment, and trying to move the district forward to implement some security plans, some security facility changes, responses to things, and probably a direction that needs to move the district forward to put the school in a good, safe environment. Part of your mission statement states providing a safe and healthy environment that fosters respect and culturally responsive practice. So if we're to provide a safe environment, there's, in today's world, and with different procedures and practices that need to occur, we have to start doing things a little differently than things have probably been done in the past from past practice. So I'll go through this and we'll kind of talk about where we're at today. And we've got it, I've got it broken down into, you know, where we're at today and then we'll move forward into a Phase One and a Phase Two of how I would propose and recommend that we can do this moving forward so that there is a plan in place that will provide us that opportunity to feel that we're doing the best possible job we can to make sure we've got that part of the mission statement of providing a safe environment. The first thing is access controls and keys. Currently in place, there's an access control system on all buildings, which means that people have to have a swipe card to get in. In my evaluation though, we are currently in the process of doing a key inventory because we still have exterior doors that have key access. We have some concern that there may be keys still floating around outside. So the result of that means that we do not have total control of people entering our buildings, whether it be with keys or these cards. With the control system, you have, you know, a lot better way to monitor and also control who has access through the card readers. Secure entryways. The district spent quite a bit of money over the past few years of putting in secure entryways. So that's a step in the right direction as far as coordinating that and creating that added barrier as far as someone entering the schools. Cameras. Currently, the high school in Glacial Drummond have cameras throughout the building. The elementary schools have one only at the main entrance. So we only get someone coming in at that point that can be identified or something that's recorded. Visitor control and school access. There's, as a result of the entryways, there's visitor control that brings someone in, but there isn't that secondary portion to that visitor control of identifying that person, making sure that they don't have any type of background that would say that they should not be on school property. So we are just registering that individual and then allowing them access to the school. Crisis plan and flip charts. There has been some things in the past that each building has tried to work with to provide to the staff of, you know, plans on what to do in certain types of situation. We've put together these, pass these around, let you see them. There's a, this one's an administrator's manual. The smaller one is one that will be placed in every classroom. We've had those in production right now with intent that they will be ready to be delivered to the schools probably within the next 30 days. Through this process, I've had, you know, very good support and assistance from every building principal and their staff in providing all the feedback to make sure that those processes and drills are all, you know, things that we can accomplish. The next step with that, we'll get into as we get into Phase One, but those are something that we have in place now, or will have in place here. Lockdown devices. We have at every front entryway, under the desk of one of the building secretaries, is a device that they can hit underneath there that will lock the school down. We had that just, there was some issues with that device as far as how that was connected and how it was hooked up and, you know, what it really did. So that's also going to be a training issue, but currently that's in place and has the capability to secure every school with just that single opportunity from that instructed administrator or somebody in the front office. All-access intercom system is another one. The district put in a phone system, new phone system a year or so ago. That had the capability, but was not completed. And what that does is that provides anybody that access within that building can go to any phone, pick up that, and if they follow the plan within there, it tells them how to access that so that they can intercom on the whole building and let people know should there be a situation. That, I think, is going to be a very valuable device in where the direction of process and procedures are going as far as, you know, the communication. And that'll be, like I said, something we'll talk about a little bit later with the training. You know, currently, there's a student resource officer at the high school that gets around a little bit, but I think that has the potential to be utilized a lot more. Each building has a crisis team and that's something that we want to try and maximize and capitalize on a little bit more as far as through the training, but we need to provide them with the tools that we have listed up there so that they can go ahead and take it to the next step of being able to react and respond should there be a situation. We have an alarm system on all our buildings, but currently our alarm system, we are not maximizing at all. We have it set for about a six-hour period every night. We have the capability to zone that within the schools. We have the capability to have that alarmed in more situations than what we're utilizing for. So that has potential to maximize that, to provide us with a little bit more secured buildings at different times. The Phase One improvements, the Phase One improvements are things that we are in the discussion phase on with, you know, the building administration and have now, as a result of a lot of these things in place, we can now go ahead and move forward to start implementing some of the procedures and processes. With the access control and keys, you know, I mentioned that we have keys kind of floating around out there that we may not be aware of. The way to minimize that is we go ahead and we turn around and utilize card access as your only way into the building. We would, to do that, as I mentioned, we're in the process right now, each building is doing an inventory of their keys to find out who has exterior access, door keys, make sure that those people have them. But what the goal is, is what we will do is we will go in and only with the input of the building administration is you will only have certain doors that will have keys so that, you know, you have to have a lockbox for fire department and those type of people. So we'll have keys for that, but after that, there will be minimal keys. So instead of spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on rekeying the building, we go away from keys totally for exterior access, except in a unique situation. There is a backup on the card reader system currently that has a four-hour battery life. We're in the process of looking at, I don't know why this wasn't done originally, but we'll get this corrected, is that should have been tied in with the generator system. So that way, then there's no reason that we would have to have keys. That, that system then will work, you know, no matter what the situation is, as long as that generator system is operating. Also, another process to work and integrate is to integrate the access control system with the alarm system. As I mentioned, currently now, our staff has 24/7 access to our buildings. But we have an alarm system that only works for about six hours overnight. As a result of that, the systems have not been linked so that if a person has access, that when they swipe this, it'll kill the alarm. And it'll kill the alarm for a set period of time. So what we've got happening now is if we've got someone coming in after hours during that time, they're setting the alarm off. Now we're getting phone calls to the people that are on the list. We're ending up having to pay these people because they're having to respond to this and it's not a very clean system. So we're going to work on putting together groups of people. I don't think in most cases, and I'm working with the principals right now, where people have to have 24/7 access to these schools. It's a safety issue for the person or for the staff member. It's a safety issue for the building because of someone leaving a door ajar or a situation like that. You can't alarm the building if you've got people that have these types of capabilities of being in these different zones that we could set up. So that's going to be something that we'll try to work on and have in place by the start of the 2016, 17 school year. Secure entryways, like I said, those are all in pretty good shape, but something that should have been done is there's a protective film that should have been put on the glass that makes all that glass shatter resistant. So if there's a gunshot or, you know, somebody tries to, you know, hit, break the window, it won't shatter and will not allow access. So that's something that we'll have to, you know, look at and try to implement that. Cameras, installation of cameras in Taylor Prairie, Cottage Grove and Winnicott would be a priority at this point so that they have, you know, sufficient camera access at every entryway so that, the key is, is that you should have cameras wherever you have a card reader so that you can make those two things work in conjunction with each other. So if there is an issue, you've got the person coming in, you then can determine, you know, how they got in and with what card, but then you also have a visual on there. So that'll be something we'll work on with those. The crisis plans and flip charts that we're passing around, we'll get those distributed, get them placed in the classrooms with holders so that they're put in the same location throughout definitely the building. If it's the high school, they'll all be put somewhere near a door. Throughout the building, throughout the district, they should all be put in a similar place so if you've got subs, they know then where these things are located for their reference. The lockdown devices, like I said, the lockdown devices are in place, but we have to train people of how those need to be used, when you release those, and so there's just more training that will go along with a lot of this planning that will have to occur. The all-access intercom system's the same thing. People are going to have to be trained on how that works, when they need to use that and how they need to use it for an effective form of communication should there be any type of situation or crisis. So that's kind of the media plans that we've been discussing with Jared and the building administration and starting to plan for of what we want to try and implement here with over the next year, now that there are, you know, proper funds going to be available that we can start making a pretty good dent in this and then moving this forward. Phase two would be taking what we did in Phase One and now moving it to the next step. Camera upgrades. As I mentioned, Glacial Drummond and the high school have cameras, but, you know, cameras are no different than any other technology. They've improved a lot with high-definition cameras. We've got cameras currently in those locations that are, you know, eight to 12 years old. So technology has bypassed that. We have cameras that we don't get facial recognition. We have cameras that don't work depending on how the sunlight is coming through windows. They don't adjust like the cameras nowadays do. So we would look at utilizing the existing cameras. So if we have 18 cameras in the high school or Glacial Drummond, we'll have 18 cameras, but we'll also add to that with the feedback that we receive from the building administration of they need a more higher definition camera at this location so that they get the facial recognition of kids coming in and out of the bathroom or key areas where they know they have problems. So we'll work closely with them to do that and to get those changed over. Then also, I think, you know, the last thing would be is outdoor cameras. We've got some buildings where we know we have some activity going on that we have no outdoor camera that we can monitor and see, you know, vandalism or some other types of activities that are occurring that would be very valuable to show law enforcement people of what's happening and what is happening. The visitor control and school access, you know, I mentioned that we have no way of monitoring who comes into our building other than they sign their name. We, there is software out there that will allow you, that will interface. Person provides an ID, you slip the ID in there, it reads it and will tell you if that person has any type of background that would restrict them from being in a school environment or anywhere near a school. So we can catch that at that point in time. That would also then provide us with a process so that as we let people into our building, we make sure they exit at the same time. Processes that I've used in my other district was a person would provide that, put it through, we hold that ID. They then are given something like this with a fluorescent orange color on it and it clearly states that they are a visitor. And also then what it does, it provides a picture ID for them going into that building. Then when they exit the building, they exit, turn this in, get their driver's license back. So you have control of the people coming and going out of your building. The training and professional development, after we get these devices and hardware and all these other things in place, you know, it's only as good as the people that can use it. We're going to have to definitely work hard with educating our staff and training our staff. Once again, the principals and building administration have been very supportive of that and I think we would need to then take it to the next step of involving our first responders and having semi-annual meetings with them during the institute days. This can be done very easily and not take a lot of time, but it's no different than any type of educational opportunity. You want to get people so they respond and react because should there be a situation, you know, time is definitely going to be of the essence. You know, you've all heard these things and, you know, I'm not going to sit here and preach about any of that, but I feel that, you know, we as a district, it's our job to prepare our people to work within that environment. We have to provide them with those tools. I think, like I said, we're in the process of providing them with the hardware, the things that they need to do that, but now we then have to take it to the next step of providing them how to react and protect, you know, our students and themselves as staff. There's a lot of different theories and philosophies on things now. We have to make sure that we're up to speed with those things. We also have to work within, you know, the area of the school. If you've got kids outside, we have to develop common collection points so that that is part of the plan so people know if they're outside, they hear someone come on that intercom system which does go outside, that there's an incident going on, where they should be going and where they should be heading to so that then they can be accounted for later or as we, you know, proceed through the process. So there's going to be a lot of things that I think, you know, you as a board need to be aware of as this moves forward and we'll do, you know, whatever we can to make sure that this is communicated effectively because I know it can be a change in culture to people, but I think we'd rather have those discussions as we try to train than have discussions after of what we should have done differently. So it'll be some things that we will ease into, we'll work closely, once again, with, you know, the people in the buildings so that they feel comfortable with them. You know, there's ways that we can do it at different times, meaning when there's students, when there's not students and, you know, allow the building staff to make that decision of when they feel that, you know, we're at that point of involving it as an all-school thing. We do tornado drills now, we do fire drills. You know, unfortunately, the environment is, you have to do a few more other drills that are unfortunately what our society is right now. So that's, you know, kind of an overview of, you know, the phased approach on this. I'd just like to kind of summarize, you know, that once again, remember part of that mission statement was to provide a safe environment. And as I've started down this journey of working with the schools to do this, they've been very, very supportive and they're very willing to be a part of this and to make this work. It's been very encouraging to work with, you know, Jared and the rest of the staff to also feel that the support is there as we go in and start to make these changes that, you know, it's the same thing. It's not the way we've always done things, but, you know, it's time for a change that I think when it revolves around the safety aspect, it's very difficult for someone to really question. And question to the sense of, all questions are good questions on why we may be doing it, but, you know, the reality is, is what we're trying to give you is, once again, that opportunity to react and we just hope we don't have that opportunity to have to react. But we want to be prepared. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Is vandalism a problem?
In some places. Minor vandalism, you know, but I mean, now, you know, we're getting ready to put in a very expensive playground at Cottage Grove and, you know, if you look at what the environment is at Cottage Grove, we have no way to monitor what's going on back there. We have some situations at Taylor Prairie, back in the back of that school where there's some vandalism issues going on there and some activity that probably is not conducive to a school playground area that I would think if, once again, in my experience in dealing with law enforcement people, if you've got these things to show them, where you pull them up on a camera and even give them access to our cameras, which with things being internet-based is something that I will strongly recommend because in, you know, some of the trainings that I've had is if, the way law enforcement people work now is with that access, they can assess a situation a heck of a lot quicker if they can get into that camera system right away. You'll notice on these books, we've got these cards of, you know, needing help or all clear. These are placed in windows so that as your first responders show up, you know, they tend to kind of circle the building, they will monitor what they see right away and that helps them. These are placed in windows so that as your first responders show up, you know, they tend to kind of circle the building, they will monitor what they see right away, and that helps them then determine what their response is gonna be. But if they've got that camera, that also helps them to identify, you know, what may be going on in hallways and those type of things. So, yeah, to answer your question, yes, we are having some vandalism.
Because it seems to me like, I don't know, I'd have to talk to somebody in Cottage Grove, but the kids park, I don't know if this had much damage. Maybe that's because it's a community project, so the community feels good at what they're gonna do in the elementary school there. So I also wanna know, is this a wish list or is this thing's happening?
Those, that first list, phase one, are the things that are happening within the current budget.
But it seems like an expensive proposition.
Honestly, a lot of it is not, a lot of it has been, we've had to repair, not repair, complete the first system that was put in. You know, I don't know all the history about it, but I understand there were some things that, there were some issues between, you know, different contractors. So as a result of that, some things were not completed. So I've just followed through and made sure that those things have been completed. Also with the new phone system being put in, that was part of that whole process too of tying in that intercom system that wasn't completed also. Just today, we put in four cameras in MG-21. Those were part of just the operating dollars that we had. The purpose of putting that in was to kind of be a pilot program of going forward on cameras to see if they're the right high-definition, you know, what range we can pick up from them, how they integrate within our current software. Currently, the software, we have the capability off of our server to run up to anywhere from 2,000 to 2,200 cameras off of it. No way are we ever gonna get to that point. The only cost on that for the cameras to put in is gonna be the cost of the camera themselves. Cameras, the high-definition cameras have dropped down in the neighborhood of $400 to $500 a piece. It's gonna be whatever wiring we have to do depending on what the location of those cameras are, and then just a one-time license to integrate that into the system.
It seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me if we're gonna put in cameras and surveil all of our kids everywhere, that's a discussion that we need to have more so than the, than the cost of it. I mean, I think, I don't think it's an automatic that it's gonna make it safer, and I don't think it's an automatic that every parent wants it or, you know, that's what we want as a community. It, I don't know, I have concerns about putting cameras everywhere. And I think to just throw them in there without a community discussion really makes me uncomfortable.
Well, then I think that's a discussion that probably needs to be had, but I think that you will question this. Should you have, we've had some situations now of some vandalism within the buildings, and I think these principals can speak to that, how they wish they had cameras and some of the situations where they wish they had a better camera.
Which is part of the discussion, like I said, maybe I'm wrong. But to just go from nothing to everywhere surveilled, that bothers me considerably, actually, so.
I guess in answer to your question, could we ask you sort of to share with us that plan of what it is you're putting in?
Sure.
So we can see that.
Yeah. What we've shown you here is a plan.
Right. Well, when you say putting in cameras, you know, how many cameras, where do they go?
Sure. That has not been determined.
Okay.
We are, we are just projecting that as part of what was part of the assessment and what was recommended as part of the assessment.
Okay. I thought you said the phase one things that were, I thought they were sort of happening now.
Just the four that were put in downstairs in MG-21. The discussions that have occurred at the building level have been where would those go, you know, what would the pricing be? You know, so there's gonna be discussion at the building level by the principals, which, you know, I think, you know, I have a very good feel for their building and feel where they need cameras to support their staff and also make it, once again, you know, a secure building. I think I appreciate the question of cameras and people's privacy, but you're talking about public building. I mean, you walk into any public building, grocery stores, courthouses, you know, restaurants and bars, and there's cameras all over the place.
And the question is, has that advanced us as a side or not? You know, just because it's being done doesn't mean it's the right thing to be doing.
Dean?
Did, we had a, we commissioned a consultant several years ago when I first came on the board to do a safety study. Did you consult with that? Have you looked at that study? Joe, Jared and...
That whole presentation was a result of the study.
That's slide two.
What?
Slide two.
Okay, okay. But did you find that study worthwhile or deficient or both?
No, I thought, actually, the study was very well-done, and I thought it made very appropriate recommendations, and I thought that the study had recommendations that were very realistic and, you know, definitely are the best.
When the board had to act on those others, I recall having three proposals. It was the $1.98 proposal, there was something in between, and then there was the Cadillac proposal, if I recall, it was $389,000. And, and I also, I think I also remember that Paul was mentioning that if you have open campus at the high school, that, that kind of organized chaos there, which kind of operates not just over lunch, but kind of free coming and going throughout the day. How is that, how is that monitored? It seems to me, I've never had an opportunity at that high school where some fine young person didn't open the door for me. Now, unless I must look like an police officer or a board member, or I look harmless at 83 that they'll do that, but, and the other question I have is, if you have these, whether they're 50, 100, or 200 cameras, there's also a cost of monitoring them. Who monitors them?
Well, no, I, most times, I would suggest and recommend it's, it's a tool. It's a tool, these cameras...
Post factum?
Pardon me?
After the fact?
Yeah. It can be, from what I understand in talking with, you know, most people here and through experiences, Ben, is they are an after-the-fact thing for, you've got a fight or somebody's stolen something, it allows the dean or principal or somebody to go back and check that camera. And, you know, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about cameras, maybe at these elementary schools, wherever you've got a card reader, so however many doors that would be. And then down hallways, because, you know, cameras are good in the sense of, they're gonna pick somebody up coming in the door, and then you put them at an intersection where then you pick where, what direction they go from there. So it's not like you're monitoring, you know, every 15 steps or anything like that. You're placing these in a location that is gonna provide you, like I said, or law enforcement people, should there be a situation, just as simple as somebody breaks into the building. You know, that gives them the opportunity to find out where that person's at within the building without having to go in, and the size of these schools, you know, if they got some better idea of where that person's at, you know, now they've got a better idea to catch them.
And the other, the last question is, it, one of the recommendations I recall in that report was greater and systematic cooperation with your local police departments for periodic, maybe unpredictable patrols and that type of thing. Has, other than frequently maybe talking to the police department, has anything been done on that? We already have a police department that's paid for. And, and it seems to me there are times in the school day where, like at, like at the lunch areas at the high school and elsewhere, that, that unpredictable times and frequency, increase the frequency of it would, would help out.
I think, you know, that's part of what, you know, the training and education and collaboration with the law enforcement people is, is I don't think, at least since I've been here, there hasn't been that direct communication of sitting down. It appears to me they're waiting for us to come forward and say, you know what, we really wanna get going on this.
Yeah, why not? That was a recommendation probably four years ago, and I think it's one that we could implement without allocating money out of the, out of the budget. And, and it would, it would seem to me, it doesn't have to be scheduled.
Sure.
That's predictable, but it seems to me whether it's Cottage Grove or Manona or the high school or at the open lunch periods and times and that sort of thing, when there's a lot of movement, that, that, that could be, you know, that could be arranged.
I think, you know, and Paul may be able to respond to that, but I think they currently work with, you know, since they have the student resource officer up there, they coordinate different times of bringing the dog in and doing, you know, different types of things as far as searches. But I agree, I think, you know, there definitely has to be an improved relationship with the law enforcement agencies that we currently work with within both communities so that we have that. I think Connie works closely with the ones out there in Cottage Grove, that they seem to swing through there every now and then. I think Reed's got them coming by due to the fact he's right on the main highway there. So I think they've got that, but I think we as a district need to be a little bit more proactive saying, you know, we would like your help and we would like your knowledge of, you know, what can we do and how can we do it better, to be trained and what can we do to provide the information to you, you know, help with whatever we see and whatever we see going on around our schools.
I appreciate your following up on this because I know, Dean, you've brought that up several times, that report that, where are we with it? And this is the first time we've had a really conclusive answer, so I appreciate that. A lot of that money that was spent that you mentioned was on the security doors, and that was the first step that we took out of that report. And then we kind of stopped, I think, there. So, and we, and we had got pieces of all this in motion, so I appreciate that you're following up on it. And I guess that was my thought with the cameras too, is that people aren't monitoring those. They're, and I don't know whether I, they're all digital now, it used to be, they used to be on videotapes, now it's been piles of videotapes. I don't know how long you keep them or any of that, but it really is just if there's an incident, you can go back and look. Nobody's gonna watch all day long.
No.
It's a different thing. But we could still have a discussion, and my other immediate thought was policy implications because we just worked on policies about student records and privacy and all. So, you know, we have to go back and see what we've said about all that because... Karen?
Thank you for coming, and I'm supportive of all this work that's been done, and I understand what you were describing as a culture change, and, and that's a helpful way to think about this. I worked in the university residence halls in 2007 after Virginia Tech had a very awful tragedy there, and it changed a lot of our operating and card access to the buildings and just getting people thinking differently about it. But my question is, so I mean, I'm on board with this, but my question is, how are we doing in Manona Grove compared to, who would you benchmark against as like who we would look to as we want to see as a model? Or how, where are we? Are we way behind the curve on this? Because, I mean, like I said, it was 10 years ago I was involved doing that in the university residence halls. Are we behind in this? Are we ahead of where other elementary schools are at? I don't have a feel for that, Jeff.
I think that we are progressing, but I think on procedures and, once again, probably the cameras and the control of our buildings, we're behind.
Okay. That's helpful for me to know in particular about how much we should be pushing to keep on.
Training, I think, is the big one. I mean, you know, we're gonna provide them with these resources, we gotta tell them what to do with them.
Right.
So, and then going into the collaboration with the law enforcement people and other first responders of, you know, developing that communication and collaboration of what do we do when we have a situation. Also, something I forgot to mention that we have put in place, I, I've got some background, first of all, I got a brother-in-law that was part of the Denver SWAT team that was involved in Columbine. So I, you know, get a lot of feedback as a result of that. Also, then there was a situation at Northern Illinois University that wasn't that far from area that we, I was in a school district near. But what I've put in place here is a system called Government Emergency, I can't remember, Emergency Telecommunication Services. When there's an incident, they lock down all the cell towers, and the only people that have access are the people that are at our law enforcement or have applied through Homeland Security for that access. As a school district, we have that capability. I've registered the school district with that, and now I'm in the process of completing the rest of the formats due to the fact it's, you know, the federal government, somebody like Homeland Security, you got, you know, who's gonna be on the list, and then there's a process of how you call in. But what that will do is that will provide us then with that line of communication with our first responders and then our designated people, where that opportunity of using a cellphone instead of the thing just being dead and useless as a result of the event. So that's, that's put in place, and, once again, that's the training then. We've gotta work with our staff on how to use it and then how the coordination of that goes with, you know, the first responders.
Thanks. I mean, I was curious how we compare who you would look at as good models for elementary schools because it's different.
Yeah.
And it depends how rural you are or how urban you are. I mean, there's a lot, so I don't know who we would look to as this is, who we aspire to be like or...
I can't tell you that specifically, but I know in the past conferences that I've been at here, within the past years, the comments that I gave you about being behind in those areas, it's a result of conversations of, oh, we've got, you know, this and we've got that, and, you know, we're working on these drills and we're, you know, actively working with our students on, you know, is it run, hide, and fight type of situations and those things, and we have not discussed any of those, you know, practices at this point, so.
Well, and how appropriate they are, different maturity levels and all that stuff.
Exactly.
Yep, thank you.
Jeff?
I just wanna point out in the study we had, he taught us how, he came in and gave us how to secure our buildings, not necessarily to keep our buildings safe. Those aren't always simpatico. You know, there's a lot of other things and ways to keep our buildings safe that aren't covered here. And just because you do these things doesn't mean you're safe either.
That's correct.
I mean, Sandy Hook had the full cameras and the buzzer entry, and we're talking, we know what Sandy Hook is, right? We don't want that to be ever, but it seems like a lot of, you know, a lot of things these do wouldn't stop most of the shootings, most of the incidences that have happened in, throughout the country, so.
I think if you go back to Sandy Hook, they did not have the film on the windows, and that's how that person got into that building, was blew out the glass. That's then where this next step came up as a result of putting a protective film on it. Also, I think that, you're exactly right. If someone's gonna get in, they're gonna get in. Going back to the Columbine situation, those kids were let in by students who opened the door for them. But as a result of the Columbine situation, there were these new things that came out with the intercom systems of, there used to be codes. You had code red, code blue. Well, you know, you get in a crisis situation, you're trying to figure out what that means. Instead of just coming out now, the practice is, you just say, there's an active shooter and he's down by room 38. Now everybody responds accordingly. So I think as we do these things, you're right, if a person wants to get in and if they wanna cause harm, you know, they're gonna have that pretty well planned to be able to do the thing. I mean, just the other day, the Antigo situation. I mean, there's a perfect example. That person never even entered the building.
Right.
So, but, you know, what occurred there is they locked everything down and, you know, minimized the situation to the two kids that left and saved and protected, you know, all the kids that were inside that were then locked down. So all I can say is I, I feel that personally, I wanna make sure we try to do everything we possibly can to provide a safe environment for these kids and staff when they enter our buildings every day and that they go home that same way. And, you know, to do that, you know, you may do some things that, you know, haven't been, once again, part of that culture, but I think, you know, you can ease into these things, you can, you know, get feedback, you can get input, but, you know, when you've got these things to start with, you know, I think that then begins that discussion and elevates people's awareness to, you know, how do I wanna respond to this? And, you know, I think we've gotta give people that opportunity. And, you know, how we do that, that's all forthcoming.
I'm not against everything here, I just think before we turn it up to an 11, we need to walk slowly before we do it.
And I, if I came across that this is happening tomorrow, I do not mean that. I was asked to give a plan of where we were as a result of the assessment. So I tried to put it into a format of, you know, what can be done, how it can be done, and where ultimately you'd wanna go with it.
Dean?
What about transportation security? Seems to me that, that there's 50 kids on a bus that are roaming the streets, and there aren't cameras, there aren't security officers, there aren't alarms, so what, what do we do there?
I know we've got cameras on the buses, but they are an important part of this whole The school district I came from, we were, it was a very unique thing that...
Are the doors secure on entry, for example? Are the doors secure on entry, for example?
Well, it depends on the driver and what they do and how they respond. So, we've got, you know, you've got a situation that that's a very, what they call a soft target, is, you know, kids being dropped off and kids being picked up. So, that's where you can have chaos, that, lunch periods, recess times, when kids are going outside. Those are, you know, points where we definitely have to work with our staff on how we do that. But working with Nelson, that will be something, that'll be part of these plans so that we can cover pretty much all those opportunities.
I hope you can begin some conversation with the law enforcement agencies to maybe, rather than, say, everybody's talking and cooperating, to get resources allocated to do that.
Well, there's something that we can try. There's grants through the Department of Justice that you run through your local law enforcement agencies and we can give that a try and see how cooperative they are. I had experience in doing that and it didn't work the first time because, you know, they had some things that they needed, which, you know, you respect that. But they are the ones that manage the grant. But if you're within their jurisdiction, they can then assist in, you know, applying for that grant, for that grant still around. But, you know, that's an opportunity where we can hopefully begin that type of communication.
I'm assuming then that we do have a written safety plan? Do we clearly have a written safety plan?
There's, currently in each building, there's a crisis plan in talking with...
Because there's a statutory requirement.
Correct. But those crisis plans are like that thick. So, you know, that's why you go to something like this. This is something you just grab, you know, and a teacher can grab it, you know, see what type of situation we got and go through, you know, those things systematically. But the plan that you're talking about and something that will be the next step provides more detail on, you know, if you have a death of a teacher and how everyone's gonna respond to that, or if you have food poisoning within your building, or you have some sort of, you know, virus, you know, more detailed things of the way things are. So, those are in place, because you're right, those are legislated that way?
I guess what I was looking for, again, was just the simple, we do have a written plan, which is required by statute. Actually, Jared, tell me yes. And then, and part of it is, we've been going through this with policy and kind of looking at it. And I, again, assuming that that plan integrates all the statutory requirements, things like the, what is it? What isn't it? The once a month they have to do a fire drill or something like that? Because you just don't hear about that. So, again, starting with telling us, it's really, really helpful to have this update. It's great. But starting with that piece of, yes, we have a safety plan and we're in the process of reviewing that or we had it or, because kind of what we've gotten tonight, which was great, was the procedures within that. But in terms of policy and board governance, we have to really know that we have the overall umbrella in place that allows us to start putting that kind of cohesive elements into place. So, I just wanted to make sure we have...
No, you're correct. We do have all that in place. So, I mean, from what I understand you're talking about, do we have the ground level and, like you said, the legislative requirements?
Right.
Those are in place and we're building off of that.
Great. And then the one question I really had kind of about the presentation was building access. So, you know, I know there's a tough blend between that. So, one of the things some board members have asked for are actually identification cards so that when we go into a building, you know it's us rather than somebody else. And other people who don't know us can see that tag on us. Now, some people don't want that, I understand that. But I still think that's something worth thinking about. So, for instance, so I'm looking at this blend visitor control and access. I'm thinking about a music program. So, I'm going to a morning music program at one of the schools and, again, I have to be let into the building. I have to be identified. I have to sign in. I may or may not have to put on a visitor tag that day. Again, it sounds to me like you're gonna be more structured and cohesive about how you do that. But I just can't imagine you're gonna take my driver's license and keep it until I come out of the building.
In those type of situations, we're talking about the individual.
I'm an individual. I'm going in maybe by myself.
That's correct.
I'm talking about me.
But you're also coming in with other parents, which means that we've worked with...
Sometimes. Sometimes.
Correct. And really, the process that's in place works. We're just adding one more piece to that because, you know, we get, you know, John Smith that comes in.
I do.
Registered sex offender and we're allowing him the same access that we're allowing you.
That's why I'm saying, wouldn't it be helpful as you start to do this visitor control school access, to take people that are authorized?
Sure.
To have access to the building. That might take 5% off the top of what you have to monitor here. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Talking with...
I'm just saying, if you're gonna really look at this process, I'm suggesting, first of all, it's gonna be difficult to integrate. The safety is a big issue because often the person we let in is the person that's dangerous and we get that. I don't know how you block that or control that.
Oh, you're right. And, you know, I think with what you're talking about is, you're right. And it goes back to the same situation. We can't control everyone and especially when you have plays. I mean, I've been involved in situations where we've had plays or musicals and you've had, you know, parents that aren't supposed to be there.
That's exactly right.
And I can't control that if that's an open activity unless that's reported by that spouse or whoever's involved in that. At that point in time, now we can call law enforcement people to deal with. But what I'm talking about with visitor control is, you know, the individual that comes in there to drop off, you know, I don't wanna say lunch because that can be dealt with right within the building. But let's say we've got someone that's coming in as a contractor. You know, I have no idea what their background is. I'm bringing them into that building to give me a quote on something. I'm gonna have them run through the process just like everybody else. Holding the driver's license, we ran into this before, is if we didn't take that, those people are just going out the back door. Now, you get a crisis situation and you don't know who's in your building, you have no control over that. Now, if that person has been the one that's created the crisis, it should be, you know, good to know who they are and know that you've got their ID as far as now, you know, who is this person? How they get in? We let them in through the process, now they've created this problem. If it's just, you know, the normal person that's there, I mean, we've had situations, yes. Well, it's real simple. During the school day, once that school day, school is locked down, you went in, this is the process you have to follow. And I understand that's probably a hard line, but if I've got a student in there or I've got a relative, meaning, you know, grandson, granddaughter, am I gonna really argue that? Because someone is questioning this and providing for a safe environment? I mean, once again, I agree with what you're saying and that's all part of the education that's gotta occur. I mean, not that if we did this tomorrow, I'm 100% with you that those are drastic changes. But if you slowly implement this, do it through, you know, school newsletters, you know, on the website. When you come to our buildings, this is what's gonna be expected of you. You know, those type of things, you know. If I'm wrong, then, you know, we won't go that route. But like I said, I've experienced these things and you're right, there's gonna be some challenges. But, you know, that's, you know, the things that we have to do to try and let people understand what that level of security is. And, you know, then we can adapt accordingly.
I mean, safety is definitely is a big topic that can be talked about, you know, in different areas and obviously philosophies and stuff like that. You know, as we talk about, there's a different approach to day-to-day activities. You know, as teachers are focusing, coming in on a normal day to do their teaching, they obviously are aware of what's going on. However, when there's a big concert going on and the doors are gonna be open, they are already on a heightened level of, you know, because they know there's activities, there's not the whole coming through the office. There might be sign in, there's just the, you know, the free flow in and then back out. You know, we wanna be able to, you know, work with our staff as well so that they don't have to be on such a heightened level every single day by having these procedures that we talk about that gives them the ability to continue on with their teaching, continuing to be aware of their surroundings. But compared to a day where, say, we have, you know, what's coming up at Taylor, for the spring sing, you know, that Friday, those, all those teachers are aware that there're gonna be families coming in and out. So, they just, on that day, they have that extra heightened security that they're being aware of. So. And I think we wanna, what we wanna continue to do is give it, you know, if it's quarterly or an annual, semi-annual update to the board so you guys. And obviously, some of the stuff that we discuss, we don't necessarily discuss in extreme detail, you know, because it's not like you wanna say exactly where certain things are at just because of the safety. But, you know, the key of it is, is that I think we're all here for the same thing, is we wanna make sure that our staff and students are safe. And sometimes it's, you know, you don't think it's gonna happen and we hope it never happens. Hope people can say that we're wasting money on all this, but we know that at the end of the day, that we've done the right things for our staff and students. And that if there is a situation, really, you know, most people will tell you, our job is to slow down the intruder or the situation so the experts that can come in and resolve it with the minimum amount of something.
It's, Peter, I think, I think what we're talking about here, I'm just thinking, you know, take a driver's license. If I have an intent on coming in, I'll give you my, I'll give you my nephew's or some stolen driver's license and I'll walk on. It seems to me it's almost a change of outlook and attitude that has to be developed to be more skeptical and be willing to say no to what appear to be responsible-looking adults who are coming in the building until it's proven otherwise. And that changes the public relations that you have with, you know, because some of these people can be a reasonably looking age father or that sort of thing that coming in and I'm supposed to pick up Suzie and, well, wait here, we'll get him. But by that time they're in, you know, I'm just thinking of all the possibilities. And it seems like it's more of a culture change and a training change than it is expenditure of hardware. I mean, that...
We don't have, we have community schools where everybody, most people know most people. I mean, we aren't having these problems, right? There's not, how many people throughout the year have been in the schools that shouldn't have been there?
How could we tell?
How can you tell? Because you can ask the people in the front office, have you ever not buzzed anybody in? Have you ever had to call somebody? Have you ever had to call the police when somebody was outside? You know, has somebody come in, came in and you've had to kick them out? I mean, that's...
I mean, we have had incidents like that, you know, and specifically, there has been situations that actually just didn't happen this specific on our school property, but we did have a student this week, last week, a custody issue that actually stemmed back from a previous year. And those are the types of things that we want to be able to prevent. We had lockdown at Cottage Grove in the previous year because of custody issues.
Custody issues, right. But not strangers coming in with...
Right. But we know those individuals and we don't want those individuals.
Right, right, right. And we know them and...
Yep. So, I mean, typically is not a stranger.
Right. And I also wanna point out, and it's not exactly germane to the discussion, but it is a little bit, we can keep John Smith out of our schools, the sex offender, but he can then walk into the office and get names and addresses, phone numbers of every resident in our school, every kid in our school. We open records requests and we can't stop him. So, I mean, it's an important thing.
Yes. That's great. I'm thinking of the history request that made me the...
So, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things we have to do to keep safe. Us spending lots of money on this, there's still other things that should be done. So.
I think Jeff's point is informing the board about sort of the history of incidents that we have so that we have a background of what the issues and problems are that help us evaluate this sort of information when we go forward. I think that going forward, you know, think about that so that you can bring that forward, the information forward. Because we look at this in kind of a vacuum and if we don't have that history.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we do, and Dan does give us, you know, some report of incidents, but we don't see that in sort of a systematic way. I have one question, which is, what is the lockdown device?
Lockdown device is, it's tied in electronically to the card access system. And basically, what it does is, all our doors that have card access, you know, have the opportunity for someone to swipe in there. Or at certain times of the day, you know, when kids are coming and going during a period of time from, you know, like 7:30 to 8:00 AM, the door then is secured open electronically, you know, so that nobody has to, you know, be pointed and all those things. So, what that device does, if there's a situation that they wanna lock it down, it just hit this button in underneath the desk at one of the secretaries and it locks all those doors and knocks them off their schedule. So, if there's a lockdown in place, you know, sometimes lockdowns can go on for three, four hours or whatever. And if those doors were programmed to open at a certain period of time, it will not allow them to open until, you know, someone comes in and manually overrides the system. So, it means that a situation, if a bad guy gets somebody's card and, you know, they then, we know that there's been that threat, that there's been some sort of issue, that we've gotten the heads up that they've gotten that card, we can lock that down and it won't allow anybody even with a card in. So.
All right. Dean, one more question. We've gone a long, long time with this. So, we have a lot of things on the agenda. So, one more question, please.
So, I'm being curtailed to make my question short?
Yes.
Okay. Don't you think this is more of a training question? We have fire drills. How many fire drills do you have a year?
Yeah. No, you're exactly right.
It seems to me you have to have that sort of thing, going back to the university thing. I worked on the 12th floor. We had a partially paralyzed woman professor. Her assignment was to go to the restroom on that floor. Okay? And the firemen who came in were men, they didn't go into the women's restroom on the fire drills. Okay? So, it's training. I'm getting at the training.
You're exactly right.
And so unless you drill at it and you find that, it seems to me you almost have to have a lockdown drill, like you have a fire drill or you have to have an intruder drill or something like that. And I think I'm getting at the aspect, it's more of sensitizing and training people and gaining municipal cooperation. I'm, until I see, personally, until I see some of that, the hardware is secondary.
We did used to have those kind of drills. I mean, I don't know, I remember having a lockdown shooter, active shooter drill when I was teaching. I don't know if they still do them, but we did.
Thank you for the thorough report.
He's describing a lot of situations.
Well, I know. Those are in addition to...
Tough questions.
Good job, Dylan. Making progress.
Let's do the board reports and then we'll take a short break. The next item on the agenda is the policy committee report.
Okay. And I, actually, because everybody else is submitting written reports, I'll try and start doing that. I just submitted this yesterday, so you might have seen it, but it's short. Basically, we're on our last series finally, so the end is actually in sight. We have a meeting, we met a couple of times since the last board meeting. We've been meeting about once a week. We're meeting Tuesday and we hope to finish the whole, we'll be done with the whole manual by then with one exception of, the one dealing with advertising and sponsorships, which we wanna talk about a little bit, we might bring here before we continue with it. And then basically, from there, it's just final cleanup. We have a list of the last several series that we need to meet with Dan on and kind of a final check and we'll be ready to start bringing it to the board over the summer. That's pretty much it and that's what the report says. So, I didn't really need to read the whole thing, but we're almost done. I guess the only other thing I wanna say is because with our reorganization, starting a new board year, we'll be starting new committees. And it's my strong feeling that whether Susan and I both want to continue on this, that we have to because we are so mired in this. And, you know, we had hoped to get it done by the end of the year and we are close, but not quite. I think we need to continue on the policy committee as is and if someone else wants to join us, so, because it says up to three members, they're welcome to. But I think to have two different people or three different people take it over would make zero sense because it would be, there's just too much work that's gone in so far and too much detail work yet to be done to really finish it, to have people new come in and replace it. So, when we start talking about committees, my recommendation would be, as I said, if someone wants to join us, that'd be great. Or if you want, if somebody's really got a brain desire to take over policy, if it waits until we finish adoption of the manual. Because at that point, there'll be just the updates and if people wanna go back and wordsmith some stuff later and do that, that could be... some stuff later and do that, that could be the next project. I mean, we've, we've done more of that than we had intended and spent more time on each policy than we intended, and sometimes we are finding, you know, some wording that we really think needs to be changed, or we like our own wording better. We have made some substitutions, we've updated statutory sites, we, we really are doing more work on this than even when we said we weren't going to do that, we are doing it because it's hard not to, so that's why it's taking us so long. Anyway, that's my last thing about that, so, when you, when you put out a call for committees, I just wanted to say that.
Your next item is the MGF report, Susan.
The Monona Grove Education Foundation met on April 12th, 2106. The superintendent reported the process resulted in the passage of the operational referendum. Thank the board for their assistance, the education foundation board. The foundation board is interested in some detailed reporting relating to budgeting and expenditure of the funds and the process for prioritization of the expenditure, similar to, I think, what, what we're doing right now with the capital fund rate. The superintendent also reported that there will be planned and organized efforts to adjust the district-wide technology needs, and that the district will be looking at core academic areas, for example, the 4K-12 science curriculum. So basically, what you have is a superintendent report out to the education foundation board, and those are the things that we reported out. The foundation purchased a community profile advertisement to promote the foundation. The grant proposals have all been approved. There were nine proposals and seven accepted, per total of $8,873. The approved grants include replacement and construction of elementary playground equipment for Cottage Grove School, so there was a foundation contribution to that. Spoken word student voices to promote adolescent growth and development. Underwriting purchase of historical books relating to the dean house. Creation of an action plan by Monona Grove High School students for sustainability projects. Expanding inventory and movement innovative materials by adding ball chairs and other innovative equipment. Piling of a scaled version of a wilderness skills hike of the Ice Age Trail for MGE21 seniors. Dance instruction that celebrates culture through dance. Jennifer Pickle reported on the gala planning for the event scheduled for November 5th that will honor Coach Dan Zewoll. The board also wanted to include, I just want to mention, Principal Paul Rost in this celebration, because we want to make sure that it's a nice mix of academic, and of course, Paul hates being monitored and exhibited for anything, but unfortunately, he can't be there that night, so maybe we'll have to get a cake here instead, who knows? But was unavailable. Grant recipients will continue to be part of the programming. Jeff Strider reported to the board on the efforts to build Hall of Champions in the high school, utilizing screens and videos capturing historical moments in the history of Monona Grove School District. So if the board themselves would like an update on that, you might ask for that. Organization relating to fundraising and setting up for projects for compilation of materials is continuing. The next meeting, Gary, is scheduled for May 10, 2016, and I can't remember where the location is.
I was really happy to see this report. It was helpful in the board documents, and a ton of awesome detail.
I'll leave ahead in time.
Thank you. Let's take a five-minute break if we can, and then we'll resume with unfinished business. Jared?
All right, so I have, based on our recent conversations that we've been having internally and based on the conversation, or based on the operational referendum, I have updated our budget planning calendar to sort of outline the next steps of how the budget is going to develop. One of the things is that, I'll just highlight some of the high areas that we plan to do. So tonight, hopefully, we'll have approval of the capital budget projects that will develop, that will be part of the capital budgets, and then student fees, and then we will bring in May the technology budget and the transportation budget. So we have identified areas that there are going to be purchases made that sort of require separate because of board policy. So when we talk about technology, obviously, we'll, we'll lay out what that technology purchases would look like, such as wireless, such as computers, replacement computers and stuff like that. Transportation, there are some equipment purchases that we've been there because of operational referendum, so we'll bring those forward. And then in the month of June, we'll bring all the information together. By that time, we'll have all the information back from each of the buildings on their request. The personnel committee will have had their opportunity to meet and sort of confer within themselves of what they would like to recommend for employee increases, how we're going to implement teacher compensation. And the other part tonight, later on, is the teacher certified staffing plan. There are a number of staffing positions in there that are above what we have already approved. For additional approval, will actually be approved at the next meeting in May. So that's how we're going to work through that, and so by the end of June, the board will have a solid complete budget, will be able to approve preliminary budget, and then we'll continue to update that as staff are hired, as additional things become known, with a final approval at the end of October.
Dean?
When we went, I'm concerned that we keep some faith with our referendum categories. You know those categories, because I know, I know you, you've probably put those numbers together and so forth. Are you, will you be able to demonstrate to the board as we put these numbers together that when we talk about heck hundred thousand dollars roughly per year, I realize you, this probably won't be the same amount every year as we reported in that, but that, that at the end of five years, that we will have been in the ballpark with where we were going, you know, absent some, some changes? Is that, that's a question.
So, on part of the reason that our budget development plan has been laid out this way is obviously, one of it was, part of the operational referendum was staffing, so obviously, we always bring in a certified staffing, but we bring in that additional. But I will have a running form that will be part of all budget presentations when we have a preliminary, when we have our budget hearing, so individuals can see that, yeah, this is what the referendum was approved for, these are the areas of how we spent that money, and, you know, obviously, some of those years are going to change a little bit, but overall, to be able to show an ongoing basis of how we use that money. Specifically, when we talk about personnel, you know, tonight, there's four additional positions. When we talk about technology, there's going to be some equipment, additional equipment purchases. The capital project plan not only has some items on this, but obviously, working with CG Schmidt to develop an overall priority list, and that will be something that will be brought forth as well. So yes, we will have a long answer to your short question.
Because I think we need, we need to keep faith with that, not only to report back, but if, if we ever, if we ever challenged on, here's what you said was coming, I don't think anyone expected to be, you know, within a dollar ninety-eight of, of where we're going, but, but we ought to keep that in track. So I think it would be useful at some point, beginning, middle, and end of the budget process, and even the expenditure end, too, that, that we can have some sense of the direction that we're going.
Yeah. Susan?
I think just along that line, we also need to remember and remind people that we would be cutting more than a million dollars from our regular budget, not adding anything, if that referendum hadn't passed. So while that's all true, some of what we're spending is due to the success of that referendum, so it's not all going to fall neatly into these categories.
So I'll try to outline it to you, because we were going in with a 1.1 million prior to, and so we're the 2.6.
Right, so that spreads across the board in terms of these different categories as well, so it's not, you know...
Doesn't fit quite...
Doesn't fit real neatly as well.
Doesn't fit neatly, but I think, I think for...
But your point is well taken.
But I, but I think the idea is that we could, we could come out with a fair proximity of, of our, what our goals were.
Right.
Susan?
Well, and I, the other thing that I think's helpful is, and I thought I kind of heard that thread coming through Dean's as well, I think we should make a plan in here, in the budget plan, for taking information out to the community, and I'm not sure exactly when that, you know, I looked at May or June, maybe, once the, the capital budget and the staffing plan and the technology budget and transportation budgets have been approved, then you can go out and talk about in the community. And, you know, maybe only 10 people will show up, but at least we can show we did our due diligence, and maybe we only do two. But I think we heard that repeatedly in the listening sessions and also from people who are involved in the referendum, you know, come and talk to us and let us know this is happening, and kind of what we're doing to make it work. And I, I think it is a piece of follow-up on the referendum. So, and I don't know a way to do that, but I, I would schedule maybe two public listening sessions somewhere in here as we get to this piece, and see what the attendance is, and then we can at least say, we offered that, and we came out to talk to you about it, and these are the pieces we put together, they're some of the referendum.
Yeah, okay. Dan and I have talked about this. I agree with you 100% Susan, and...
Yes? Did you hear that? Somebody wrote that down.
And actually, Dean and I had a conversation as a follow-up from our referendum committee, which, as you know, was our number one goal of that committee, was the communication to the community about the referendum, and part of that is an ongoing following the referendum to continue that communication, as you stated. And so Dean and I had an opportunity to have a follow-up, I mean, to kind of talk about what that communication might look like, whether it be written communication to, you know, the community, via, you know, op-ads to the paper, listening sessions, and so absolutely, that's something we need to talk about and further to adjust, but without question, we need to communicate this budget very clearly.
I've asked, I've asked Peter to continue the referendum committee for the follow-up communication for whatever it takes, three, three months or something like that, to do that, and so, Gary, if you're, you know, or anybody else who wants to join in, because I think we have to answer a couple of those kind of pointed critiques we got right at the very end, and, and we also have to address, when we cut more about the budget, we can answer those. And I think just to go out to thank people for listening and, and hearing our case.
Yes.
And definitely through the, the listening sessions that we already had in place, and the feedback that we received from individuals, we're already starting to revamp, like, some of the website, that business services website, what type of information do they want to know about the budget? And just being able to do that and working through that process to have just the finger, you know, the information at their fingertips. Each community's a little different in what they look for, and typically, we don't have a large turnout at our budget hearing, our annual meeting, to, you know, get those questions and say, this is what we're looking at. So we pretty much did, did us well, but definitely through those listening sessions, we picked up, I think, or I at least picked up some great tips of what we could do to improve our website to give additional information to our members.
Gary?
Yeah, right on. I, that's the first that I heard of extending the referendum committee. It's more like the...
I told you that.
The duties of the, now, in the, like, do you carry it over into the new, what I would call it, fiscal year, the new year for this? It may be worth thinking through, what's the charge to the community relations committee, and to what extent does that umbrella include following through on the communications and follow-up from something like a different committee, whether it's referendum, whether it's policy, what personnel, whatever it is. So I'm totally open to helping with that and want to help with it. It's just a matter of, like, how, you know, how, how fast we can get it going.
Well, it would be very simple if, if you're the PR committee, you know, and all we have to do is bring in Susan, and we could, we could, you know, cooperate on, I don't care whether it's the referendum committee, but I, I think the, at least the three of us and anyone else who wants to join, we need to come up with some kind of communication plan that would be a bit focused and concentrated in the next two, three months, perhaps, and then, and then kind of have some reminders and so forth.
Yep.
And by, and by the way, Jared, a former graduate of Monona Grove High School who now works on the website at Stevens Point has noted our website and called it absolutely remarkable. Remarkable what? She didn't comment, but, but, but I took it, I took it as a very compliment.
Yeah. That was a lot, I mean...
Peter? Okay, Jennifer?
Just briefly, I think it's important to be mindful of the voices that may not show up in meeting. So we do know that we have constituents who are on fixed income, who are not happy about the referendum passing. And so I appreciate all of your work, and I just want to absolutely support the continued communication, and I think we owe that, whether they voted yes or no. And it's important to remember those voices.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
We need to recognize that sacrifice, or whatever you want to call it.
Bingo, the community center is really fun. The other thing that I think integrates into this piece of the discussion is that we do have a meeting scheduled for June 15th with the Village of Cottage Grove. And actually, when I talked about that, one of the first things that came up was, well, didn't you do that with the city of Monona? Which again, so two communities, getting the schools, having the listening sessions. The other thing that we found is the listening sessions where a lot of the people that came to the listening sessions were non-supporters, or, and who were skeptical of what we were doing and how we were doing it. And it's good to get that input, because that helps build the FAQs. We could build FAQs about this year's budget, and we could run a similar thread that you could click on to about this year's budget and build those pieces off it, now that we've got the structure in place. And Dean loves writing the FAQ, so that would be fun.
After you edit them.
Yeah. But again, looking at building that opportunity, I, what we said in response to that question about the city of Monona was, we were invited. It was a special meeting, and we're invited. And Jared did a wonderful job presenting to the Monona State Council.
Okay. Next item is the discussion of possible approval of the 1617 capital budget. Jared?
At the last board meeting, we walked through each, I went through these proposals, so there's no change to the dollar amount of the proposals. We did put the total budget amount that will eventually get into the budget of the 350,000, because that gives us the ability to have flexibility. Some of these costs, obviously, are estimates, they're coming in, final costs sometimes fluctuate. The other part of it is, is we do have to plan for things that happen during the school year, to be able to fix certain things that fall within the ability. If it needs to come to the board, we will bring it to the board. The other part of it is, is I did just add, and I apologize for that, is that under administrative comments, we did take the current capital budget project and highlight and yellow the things that will correspond to what was in the CG Schmitts. Now, I do want to point out that there, one of the things is with, with the timing of the referendum, obviously, you know, we, we were working with CG Schmidt, but contractors are very reluctant to agree that they're willing to commit to certain things, and obviously, summer school programming and things like that. So the major projects that will occur that were listed on the referendum for, like, the facility and maintenance improvements will actually start next summer, because what will happen is, and starting in November, we sit, well, we sit down now, but in November, bids and stuff like that, start going out to get the timing and stuff, so then the earlier we can bring that to the board, January, February, for those to capital project approval, then we can lock in times, and it also gives us, you know, if we do need to say we're going to do a, a major renovation at Winnicqua, what are we doing with summer school? Also being able to look into, can we have work done at night versus day, and being able to really get the most, do it the most cost-effective way. Now, there are things that we're trying to meet in, you know, get into here that were things like the windows and some doors, that we're able to do without having a, a long planning time for that. The other part of it is, is that we're able to put in our wireless system for technology, and then that dollar amount would be shifted back over to capital next year, because when we talk to the, the public, we talked about going up to the 500, 600,000 dollar mark, and so that's how that shift would sort of happen, being able to put it in one place this year and move it over. But we will definitely come back to the board after we've met with CG Schmidt with a complete detailed list of annually, like, these are the items we would like to do in year one, year two, year three, year four, and with a, with a dollar amount, and how that process will work, and being able to publicize that so individuals know that.
Dean?
So, that's the question I was going to have. You have 350,000 here. Part of our referendum was that we needed to raise that to at least, on an average, of 500,000 the year, and I understand, what I'm getting from this is that since we didn't know that the referendum passed, as you, at the last board meeting, we couldn't get a lot of the items on that would require bids and advanced planning and architectural work, and that'll begin to fill in that gap later.
Yep.
Is that right?
So what we'll do is, we'll put a little bit more into technology for some one-type purchases, and then next year, be able to ship those, that money over so we can continue to build our budget. Because once you commit money, it's not always easy to reallocate it.
Well, that, that partly answered my question, which was, is this one of those cases where we would look at, is that new Fund 46, where you create a capital fund where you can roll money over, so you don't have to spend it all in one year? So like, if we're looking at a big repair, we could take some of this year's.
Yep. Yep. So I mean, that is an official, yep, so there's, we're looking at that versus for negative eight district, Fund 46 doesn't really help us. As for, you know, but for those school districts that are positive, you put money away and still get eight on that.
Okay.
So what we do is we have a number of one-time purchases that we can purchase this year so we're not putting that money into fund balance, we're actually utilizing it and you just shift it from one location to the other location.
Okay.
Susan?
Jared, I really appreciate you highlighting that because it, kind of one of the questions I, and I followed up with you on that as well, was, okay, so you, and again, one of the questions was from an individual on the long-range planning and looked at the, the intense work and effort that was put in by CG Schmitt, understanding a lot of these things maybe have been identified and already in the pipeline before that, but really working hard to integrate that so we can say, you know, we're meeting those needs. Because again, when you look at this, you know, the high school was, I mean, I think on this sheet, it's the highest and on the urgent needs, it was last. So if somebody, I mean, I went back and looked at the report because I was challenged to do it by this person. And again, when you look at the allocation, it doesn't yet match up. So as we continue to move forward, if we just see some relationship in how that goes forward, because one of the things we talked about was the need at Winnicqua School. And, and then you looked at, at Winnicqua School and it wasn't, isn't up there in the high number of priorities. So whatever it's, Taylor Prairie is also one of the highly identified schools. So as we integrate that, anything that Jeff has the expert, I mean, I looked at that report and I saw a lot less matches than I'm seeing here. So this is really helpful because this makes it so much clearer to me. Plus I can use this if people ask the question, "What have you identified that was from that report?" Particularly the people that were on that committee who worked hard to see that happen. We could say, "Look at this, we're working on it right now." And, and then some response at some point about a plan for the roofing projects. Because those were major CG Schmitt identified items with major costs.
And so that's where that whole priority list comes out and you will be able to lay out a lot more detailed plans.
That was nice because you said, "We'll be meeting with them and be doing that."
Because we're getting idea, because there's obviously more money, more projects than we have.
I know.
There's especially money for...
It's the first thing we've got is a capital project.
I just would, I just would agree with, with that to, that's part of the referendum, Jared, you know, to tie in the CG Schmitt stuff over time with that and the way you've identified is good.
Really helpful.
Susan?
I was just going, I'd like to move approval of the 201617 capital budget presented.
Second.
Remove it seconded, is there a discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible approval of the student fee schedule for 1617. Jared?
All right, this, the document that I've included is the same document that we discussed at the last meeting. I did put under comments, there was some conversation at the last meeting regarding the 4K fee increase of $10. So we did not make the change, however, I think it's at the pleasure of the board if you, you want to make a recommendation to change that, you're able to do that. Did just include, you know, it's, it's not like we're looking at recouping lots of revenue, we're just trying to bring it in line with, you know, where our other grades are. And then there was an additional question that did come up after the board meeting, which is a very valid question and when we talk about our high school Jump Start, there is the proposal moving it from $35 to $50. We were able to identify in here that, you know, how the expenditures and how much fees we've collected in the past and some of the materials that the students get. I definitely think there's a, you know, there's a lot of research out there that talks about transition, but I would, my recommendation would be is I think this is an opportunity for us to continue doing what we're doing right now and then be able to give us a year to look at, how do we really expand this to try to get all of our students and how does that work for the high school? Right now, Jump Start runs at the same time as our summer school program and they have started, you know, making, taking registrations back in February because freshmen start, you know, registering and stuff like that. I've been very confident in the high school administration, they run the program and I think as well as we save. I think the key of it is, is that any student that wants to come that has a financial, we waive those fees. But I definitely think that, you know, there is the concern of increasing it from $35 to $50, that seems like a, you know, a large dollar amount. But I'm thinking, you know, as we talked with the high school administration and Nicole Norfester, who sort of organizes it, it definitely assists, it's a great transition, something that we still classify as optional. You know, maybe what we want to do is look at a way that we offer that maybe in August and try to encourage 100%. Not, not knowing that you may not get that, but I want to leave that up to give the opportunity to our high school administration and, you know, our instruction department to be able to work together and make that determination. We did talk about the fee last spring, after the fee schedule was approved last year, we talked about it. And, you know, that was before we were planning a referendum and so, you know, I, I totally, we kept that fee going for $50 just because we felt that, you know, and then obviously fees started being collected back in February. So we believe this, this would be giving us the opportunity to really explore that opportunity this year and see if there's any way they, they would like to revamp it.
Susan?
Do we, do you know a can about what percentage of our kids do participate in that? I don't know if you have that.
About 75 to 8%.
That's what I thought.
It's pretty consistent, two-thirds and three-quarters pretty consistently the last two years it's been up a little bit.
That's what I thought, okay. And I know there's, there are other reasons that kids don't go, they have summer jobs, family vacations, there are all kinds of things that interfere, but that's, that's good. Thanks.
Susan?
I just, I really appreciate you getting us that information, Jared. I, I just, I don't know, I just think this is a really important board point and I think in our governance role, we need to really seriously think about this. Actually, I had a great opportunity to talk to Lisa a little bit as well about this. But the fact is, there is significant research relating to students making the transition into middle or high school that, that makes it very clear that without working on that transition, the student may be derailed from their school careers and, and also significantly affect their academic achievement. And the research is very clear on this. This is not blurred or muddy. This is very clear and it's over 10 years old now. They continue to run these studies because it's been so clear. Based on these findings, it would seem important that our district consider a more formalized transition program and how it can address a very effective transition from middle school to high school. I think our kids are going to have it. I think it's so wonderful that you're doing this. I mean, it is so great for these kids to be able to have this transition and this opportunity. But it seems to me, just in my heart, that we shouldn't be charging for a program that effectively transitioned kids from eighth grade to ninth grade if we really think that's important and the research supports that that's a really important transition. And again, the findings on these is that a significant number of kids fail ninth grade. I mean, there's just all kinds of research that supports how important this is. So understanding we're, we're going to do this for this year, I just think if we can keep this in our back thoughts about, is there a better way to do this that we can get 100% participation so that all students have the opportunity to at least minimally get an assist to this? And then maybe there's an additional piece plus program? I'm not sure. But I'd, I'd really like to have us put that on the work page and have us work on that just because it's shown such great success. Why, why not let us, you know, take this step and be the showcase?
Susan?
I do want to make clear that the fees are going for consumable things. They're not, we're not just charging a fee, but they're going for things that are actually purchased and we were way undercharging in previous years. So this is a start toward paying the actual expenses and includes things that kids get and get to keep and that kind of thing. So it's not, it doesn't mean, your point isn't valid to think about it, but...
I agree.
It would change a lot of what kids like about the program if we reduce those, took those items away. So it's just, it's more complicated.
Which number, which number are you referring to here? The Jump Start?
The Jump Start program, right, right. I just wanted to make it clear that we're following...
Are you making a proposal to change it from uploading?
No, I am not. What I am saying is, I'm making a proposal that we study that transition plan. And we may want to keep exactly what we have, but I want to make sure that we start working towards something that has 100% participation because it's every student that needs to be assisted.
And my, my other follow-up is just, I don't know that we know a lot about what goes on in ninth grade once they get there in terms of homeroom teachers and how, because I know at the middle school...
We don't.
There's a huge programmatic piece that includes transition. And I don't know how much of that, so that was another thing that maybe we need to hear more about or maybe there is more possibilities there too. It doesn't all have to be, Jump Start's a piece of it, but there are other things that I know teachers do on a regular basis at the high school, but we may be, so just as a, for the comment.
All right. I'd like a motion for approval of the student fee schedule, yes?
So moved?
I gotta finish, if you're gonna say so moved, I better finish by mistake.
I move approval of the 201617 student fee schedule as presented.
Second. Remove it seconded, is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And for a discussion of updated 201617 certified staffing plan. Dan?
Okay, first I'd like to kind of talk, go back through the timeline of the, of the staffing plan and how we developed it and how it fits into the budget process. As you see in the, the supporting document, that there were a number of positions that were approved back in March, on March 9th. And if we recall at that time, that was pre-referendum and those were the most critical positions focused on class size and maintaining or in some cases where class sizes were getting too large again to bring them down with and guidelines. And so we made the recommendation at that time because we, we couldn't wait until after the referendum, master schedule needed to be put together particularly at the high school and middle school, well, actually all the schools, but, and so we could have those staffings, you know, set. And certainly we're keeping our fingers crossed that the referendum passed to help pay for those new positions. However, it was our recommendation that the board approve those regardless of the outcome of the referendum, that we would, those are a number one priority in the budget, that we would have to find a way to fund those. And, you know, we were talking about the options had we not had the referendum. So those original, you know, approximately eight FTEs were approved back in March. Moving forward then, and as we developed that, it started with individual conversations that I had with each principal, looking at their projected enrollments and looking at class sizes and basically trying to maintain the programs. Then we also had the preliminary discussions about, okay, what might we be able to make adjustments to later on in April as we are now post-referendum, should it pass, that wouldn't be, would not impact the master schedule? And so we said that we need to look at the most critical needs of what we really know that, that there's areas that we can help, you know, and meet some of those student needs that, that, that we, I don't want to say aren't meeting, but that we need to improve and things that don't impact, you know, the master schedule as well. And that this would be a one, kind of a, not addressing every need that we have and I guess I need to, you know, just remind everyone that that $2.6 million referendum, we, was not anywhere close to the actual needs that we could have, that we identified needs well above that. And that we, the whole purpose of the referendum was basically to try to maintain where we're at. We know that staffing is always the number one priority when we to build the budget. It has been and will continue to be, but also part of it as well as we'll be talking about in the very near future salary and benefits is a report piece as well, not just the number of staff. So with that, we had talked about a number of areas that we felt we needed increased support. And so since that time, again, there were more follow-up meetings with our, all of our administrators individually and as a team. We went through this several times together. And so with that, we're making the following, you know, the attached recommendations and I'll go through one by one. Before I get into that, I would like to address, you know, the comments you heard earlier specifically to the music program, but, and that falls into one of those areas that absolutely there are additional needs as there are in every department and that what we looked at is maintaining status quo and all those for this year with the idea that we will continue to look at those other ones that have impacts on master schedules and, and other needs, you know, in next year and in the future. Specifically with middle school music, just to address specific, the comments that were made by Janice, everything that she said is absolutely accurate. It started in a conversation that I had outside of the regular staffing piece. I had a meeting with an individual teacher about her specific schedule in the music department and actually Pat Doran joined us, so did Janice, I believe. And so in that conversation about that particular teaching assignment, some questions came up that I had about the history of staffing in the, in this district with regard to music and so on. And so I did invite Pat to meet, you know, with me again shortly thereafter and Renee Tenet because we were talking primarily about middle school, but it was really more of a K-12 discussion as well to help me understand the history of how we staffed our music department. And as many of you, maybe all of you know that typically with, whether it be band or choir instrumental vocal music, that many times in addition to the classroom instruction, that we have small group or individual instruction. And so sometimes to do that, many schools won't pull out kids out of class for those and, and that's disruptive, it's difficult. And so the idea of a teaming, my understanding has been around for quite some time in our instrumental music as a way of providing that individual instruction without having to pull kids out of class. And it's not been historically the practice in the vocal music, although the recommendation, you know, is that perhaps we should mirror what we do with the instrumental music. And so it was a really good discussion. I think there absolutely some merit, you know, into looking at doing that. But it's more than just a staffing plan of adding that, to look at that, it is an instructional, you know, change as well. And so I think it does require a lot of the discussion and, and not something just to make a quick decision on. So we are committed to continuing to look at that. As you brought up in some of the questions, we need to look at how many students are being served, what are the numbers and, and more specifics. But I think in general, it's, it made a lot of sense to me, but it's not something I'm going to just go and make a recommendation to start increasing staffing without having a more detailed report. And I said the more important thing was, this was way back in January, so once at the time was initiated, it was developed basically though for our budget development. That basically, upon the referendum, that we were going to stick with really the most urgent needs for increased staff for this year as well addressing salary and benefits, I think are much more urgent. And then that we will continue to look at all of our programming in, in years to come. So that was kind of the, that's, that's the big picture as far as the, the decision-making process with regard to what leads to the recommendation tonight. So maybe before I go through that, if, if there's any follow-up questions I can answer specifically about music or the, the process for developing the recommendations, we'd like to answer those.
Just a simple question, what, what fraction or what, what FTE would that request have been made? I, I didn't quite understand all the fractions of, of students and people.
I think there are kind of a couple different possibilities to that, to talk about, you know, fully staffing the way things might have been in the past and versus, you know, the true teaming. The one thing I get, so I don't know, I mean, it's not a specific number of FTEs, it all depends on the different, we could have done a number of different things or can do a number of different things. One of the things I think it is important to point out is that we do have some teaming going on currently with the vocal music at the middle school and that was started two years ago partly because of, we did have an increased need, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Renee, if I'm not saying this correctly, but my understanding is that we, because of the number of sections that we had, we had an increased need to help support our general music. And then we all, we did add an additional part-time position that included some teaming, I believe at the sixth and seventh grade level. So it's been, you know, we've done some of that and part of that was to make a more reasonable schedule for, you know, one of the instructors that we have. And so the recommendation that you have before you is a status quo for next year to maintain some of that. The recommendation, I'm sorry, for me. Yeah. The recommendation you heard from Janice and that some of you received from Pat as well is to expand upon that and go further. And, and that's the point that I think that I'd like to...
And I think the proposal was .9 essentially.
.9.
Yeah. Yeah. Susan?
So some of this looks like a mix too and, you know, with Pat here, maybe if, I mean, it would be, I guess, usually we would let them come and speak if they want to speak that. But one of the things that looked fairly simple and didn't seem to be related to the teaming, and again, I don't have the expertise, so I'm just kind of shooting in the dark here, but it's the present staffing level of the fourth grade string, seven sections, .36. But it's the present staffing level of the fourth grade strings, seven sections, the point three six, and they were looking at moving that to point five, and that in sum was only an increase of point one four. And that's based on the number of students. Their, the staff's feeling about the demands on the staff to be able to handle that with that percentage of FTE, so was that addressed?
The recommendation is maintain status quo, the FTE is based upon the teaching assignment and student contact time.
Okay, 'cause it does look like some of the other mixes might be more the team approach, but that one looked like a pretty straightforward based on how many kids and the amount of time that you need to be able to do that job. And again, I counted out this on the information, I have point eight nine. Point eight, eight, point five nine? Totally, yeah, the difference, point eight nine.
Point nine.
So is the thought that you and Renee are recommending that we study this for a year?
Well, yeah, the discussion is that, that is my recommendation that, yeah, we, for this year, because of the things I just mentioned, okay, is to maintain status quo and that we would continue the discussion. And make a firm recommendation one way or another, you know, for next year.
We did approve staffing of an individual blessed on the thirteenth, that originally had been a part-time music teacher going to one point oh, did any of that factor?
No, that replaced the teacher who retired side note.
That maintains status quo essentially.
Not that it's a big, big difference, but it's a little bit when you're talking small percentages, that strings position to point four one, that's what it's posted at, not a point three six, based on the minutes that, so that's just a small little change, but that should be, should be cleared up, I think.
Did you have a thought read about the logistics of increasing the point four one to point five oh for the workload balance kind of issue of that job? When Janice brought that point up and I read this information about the number of students enrolled there, there's the contact time, but then there's also the managing the parents part. And I don't know how that's factored in, how different that particular position is from other types of positions, I don't have a feel for that.
I mean, my first, it's my first year actually dealing with from this, you know, this vantage point, and at this point we have Janet is shared between both, you know, the middle school and the elementary school, so I do think, and sometimes that can be difficult because you have two different buildings. This position as it is, is independently posted at a point four one, so it's not combined with anything else. And how I understand it, there isn't, we look at percentages with minutes, there's, it doesn't, it's based on the minutes they're teaching with kids, it's not based on, say, adding that prep time in. So that is one thing that I've understood as we've gone through minutes with our percentages. So as far as the workload goes, I, you know, I do think that it's a, it's the beginning, it's starting with kids, so there's gonna be some management pieces to that, but I don't have a firm what it should be. Posting of, you know, physicians gets difficult when they're low percentages, and so that is a piece of it.
Susan?
Yeah, well, when you just said that if it's a point four one position, that includes no prep time?
It's minutes with kids.
All physicians have prep time.
That's what I was gonna say, it has to include some prep time.
All FTEs are based on instructional minutes. So for example, high school teachers are easiest to figure out, it's a block system.
Right.
Okay, so all high school teachers have six student contact periods out of eight, three each day, they teach five and then a resource.
Right.
Okay, so that's a full-time FTE, and then they have the prep time.
Right.
So likewise, when we have a part-time teacher, if you, if they're with students, let's say, exactly half of the time of what a full-time teacher is. They have a point, if they have a point five FTE contract,
Right.
their student contact time is half of what a full-time teacher is, well, they're expected to be in the building half the day.
Right.
So in there is gonna be prep time within that.
Right, that's what I meant.
So a point four one teacher would be expected to be in the building, point four one of the time all teachers are there. They're not with students, point four one.
That's what I meant, that was my question, I just was wondering.
Yeah, so there's prep time.
There is some prep time in there.
I just can't figure out how people are divided up into point four one line.
Well, you look at what a full-time teacher's assignment is, and you just simply divide the minutes.
There's, these fractions of people, this, don't jive with me.
Will you go through then your?
Sure. Okay, so here, we go through the recommendations, and again, we're not asking for action tonight, this is just for the discussion to make sure that we understand the recommendations. The first one, and I'm going through the summary that's in the written part of the board docs, you have the overall sheet that has every FTE position, but I'm just going through the bullet points where the changes are. High school math, in the original recommendation that the board approved back in March, we were looking at an additional point five FTE. The reason for that is, we felt that if we could hire a halftime teacher, we really needed a point eight, but we had a couple other teachers that could do overloads, and between that we would fill the point eight. Since that time, we've determined that, we thought we had someone on staff that might be interested in a halftime, it turned out that wasn't the case, and so we're recommending, actually rounding up to a full FTE, that allows us to take two more sections and add a minute to reduce class size further. I don't recall exactly which sections that was, whether it was algebra or geometry, but basically it allows us to bring, we still had some class sizes that were at the upper end. And so, so that was, it really was a need, and it was just a way initially of trying to really minimize and try to, I don't wanna say take a shortcut, but find it one way, but we think the one point oh would be a better fit there. And that is what we have scheduled in the master schedule right now. K-five related arts, as you know, we have an additional number of sections in the elementary, so that means additional sections of art, music, and FIEC, so the corresponding FTE increases are in the plan.
That was the, thanks for that, 'cause that was the question I had also about the fourth grade strings, is that, was that one of the levels where we had increased enrollment projected, and so then there'd be more kids?
And that's why it increased to point four one, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because there are additional sections.
That was accounted for in the change from the point three six to point four one, but not really the idea that with that many more kids and families to deal with, it's just that many more kids and families to deal with, outside of the contact time?
Sure, which is expectation of all of our teachers.
Right.
The other thing, just to point out why FIEC was a larger number than art and music, art and music meet twice a week, FIEC three times a week, and so there's inherently more sections. Plus, we also have, in one of those positions, travel between two buildings as figured in as well, so that's why that's a larger number. Okay, reading, title one, increase a point four FTE, we actually have one person right now that is a point six FTE that services the high school and a little bit of MG twenty one. We have a definite need at MG twenty one for more support, MG twenty one is eligible as a title one school, and so they should be receiving that, and so that's where the funding would come from as well. So recommend to increase that one position to a full-time, which is a point four increase. Glacial Drumlin at risk decreased by one point oh, we've actually already talked about that, that instead of having an at-risk teacher, we feel, based on student needs, we'd rather have a special ed certified teacher, and so it's really not, it's decreasing at risk, but increasing special ed, which is down below. And the board already took action on that free call on, on the staffing. Gifted and talented, and this one, you know, Lisa could speak to more specifically if you have questions, but we currently have one point five FTE for the entire district, which means we aren't providing any service right now to Taylor Prairie or the high school, and to increase by one additional position, so we have two point five. It wouldn't necessarily be evenly split, but it'll coverage at all buildings, and then exactly how that would, which teacher would service which building would still be worked out, but it would provide increased opportunity and service to every building then.
I'm excited about that, and yet feel compelled to say, that one doesn't feel like maintaining status quo, that one feels like doing something different, and so that, that one and the next up ones had jumped out to me about, that's a different thing than telling the music people that we're not doing anything other than status quo.
Absolutely, those would be ones that where we have, currently have a deficit, where we're not reading student needs, and those are the most critical areas that we wanted to build to address. So I did wanna make sure it's clear, absolutely it's not status quo.
And I really wanna see that happen, but it's hard for me to reconcile that in my mind, it's, if this was gonna be a status quo.
You know, sort of, when I look at sort of status quo, the things that are not status quo here, there's three positions.
Correct.
Correct, which is the gifted and talented, the GDS instructional coach and the math.
Yeah, absolutely, so why don't I just get through those, then we can get to the, yeah, so that's exactly right, so the next one is instructional coach, glacial drumlin. You heard a presentation at the last meeting from Artosis, you hear what they're doing, that's part of their assignment, we wished we had more time for it. We know we have a full-time instructional coach, and have had for many years at the high school, and glacial drumlin doesn't. Part of the rationale why we don't is, you know, as we looked at needs a couple of years ago, remember, we added Dean of Students, and we thought that was a higher priority at that time, we still had the need for the coaching as well. And so the model would be identical to the high school, that one person to service the entire building as an instructional coach. And then we would have consistency amongst every building in that area. And then elementary math coach, that would be specifically for math, and that's part of the area where we have the shortfall, that we don't have enough tost at times. In addition, someone with those specific skills, and so we've invested a lot on literacy over the years, but math has been neglected, and so we're asking for one position to be shared amongst the three elementary schools. Ideally, we'd love to have a coach in every school, we know that's just not possible at this point, we still have budget constraints, but we think that could have a very positive and profound impact on our math instruction and, you know, for our students. And then the last two, we've talked about special ed, the one was the glacial drumlin, and then also the one point oh addition at high school and MG twenty one, again, just based on student needs, the number of students we have identified with special needs, we need additional staffing. And last one, vision, we're not reducing or cutting the program, we had a vision teacher that retired, and we're gonna fill it by using contracting outside agency. We'll still meet the student needs, you know, vision teachers are very tough to come by, and it gives us more flexibility than in the future as those needs change every year, that we can contract with what we need.
Susan?
Well, so the first question is on the vision. What kind of contract, are we using some kind of CISA shared services or?
There's a couple options, CISA does have services, but there's also other outside agencies, and Krista, if you wanna speak to what the plan would be?
Sure, our hope is to work with the agency, we're already contracting our services with, for orientation and mobility, they have the capacity, we have kind of a unique situation where we have pretty much a full-time FTE need that's beyond what most contracted services can offer, so we're working on a plan to work with some known staff that we've worked with before, that again are currently providing some of our services for our students, so just working out the details, but we will continue to provide the services in the area of vision, just not with the district staff number, for the reasons Dan stated, they're very hard to come by.
Okay. And then, well, I just, it might be helpful if you have them, because people are gonna ask us about the, particularly with this timing, with new positions, they're gonna ask us about the elementary math coach and the instructional, the GDS instructional coach. If we have job descriptions for that, that would just, you can post them, you can put them wherever you want, just someplace that if we get the question. And then the nice thing is that we actually do have that experience with high school, and maybe at some point, you wanna have the high school person come and talk to us about what they do, because then we'll have a good feel for how this is gonna work, and we can respond to those questions. 'Cause we're under a fair amount of scrutiny right now, so, I mean, to, for, you know, teach us, train us, and let us be your ambassadors here. And again, the math coach, understanding that, is literacy. And the other thing about the gifted and talented, well, we have not been meeting the needs of these kids in this district by not supplying service to Taylor Prairie or the high school, not to the high school for, geez you guys, this is where the career planning happens. And in fact, I mean, it's been my impression that we've been out of DPI compliance for years, if they investigated us, which they're not doing right now, we'd be statutorily cited, we should be embarrassed by that. And I've been asking for us to supply and meet the needs of kids in this arena. The other thing is, if, people have to understand, this is not about kids that are necessarily in the top ten percent of a math class. These are kids that are gifted and talented in learning and creating and exploring and expanding in lots of different ways. And if we don't have staff trained and timed to be able to provide that service, then we are seriously deficient in this district in how we meet the needs of those kids. And I'll tell you right now, and I've told this story a million times, but I'm gonna tell it again, 'cause I wanna make sure everyone hears it, the reason you have advanced math at the middle school is because we had a gifted and talented person who was there when I said, what are you gonna do with this kid? Well, I'm not really sure, we just put him in the back and we give him a sixth grade book, and I said, you already did that with him in fifth grade, now what are you gonna do with him in seventh grade? Well, we'll put him in seventh grade, so I'm getting notices from Pat Dorn, 'cause the kid's not showing up for band, this is not working. I said, help me with this, and this person came in and tested that class, we had fifteen kids who were skilled enough to do that level of math, we have pre-algebra, algebra, and geometry at the middle school today. That is a simple example of how we meet the needs of those kids, this is the same with music, when my kids started, we had no strings for these younger kids, seventy-five percent of our kids in the elementary level do strings. This is where we need somebody to help us develop the creativity and the ability of these kids, and these people are trained to do it. If this person doesn't work, then we need to evaluate them, because this is a piece we need, and we should be ashamed of ourselves for not doing it sooner, but we didn't have any money, but now we're tight, so thank you for doing this.
My question is just about the vision person, if you, if I heard you correctly, I thought you said we, we actually still have about a one point, a one FTE need, so I'm wondering why?
That changes over time, and two years old, really different.
Okay, so that's the reason why we're going to contracting out room, okay.
Well, that is difficult to find somebody, we have a one point oh.
I figured that was a problem too, but I just said, usually you like having your own staff if it's a one point FTE, but I get that that's an area that changes, so okay, that makes sense.
Jeff?
One thing about the math coach, if, that's needed, are we really gonna cover with, by my count, fourteen hundred and fifty-four kids, three schools and drive time with one person?
Well, that person's not gonna have contact with fourteen hundred and fifty-four kids, but they will with all of our teachers.
'Cause it seems like that's really spread out.
Better than nothing.
Sometimes, it is, sometimes I don't know if it is, you know, and another thing, it's not on here, but I would like to see, is a complete review of our student services department to make sure that we're servicing kids that way, in terms of social worker sites, counselors. And we talked about ANDO earlier, I mean, if you read, there wasn't anything we could've done safety-wise, but that kid has supposedly been bullied and was a good kid who just had a really rough experience, and I just did a look on the ANDO website, they don't have, and I could be wrong, this is a quick look, they didn't have a social worker or a psych, so, could they have solved it a different way, could we make our schools safer, spending money in a different way besides shutting it in, so I would like to see a review of that, and I think, as some of my complaints in the last year, that we are understaffing that position.
That's on our future agenda, it's the student services.
But I thought it fitted understaffing down here, so.
But I will address it with, it is a good question about, and it is about priorities, as I mentioned, if we had more resources, we would be proposing a lot more positions in many areas, including student services. I will say that student services has been a priority for this district, and it is difficult when you start comparing to other districts, when we say, well, we've got more than them, well, they would like to have more, it's not that they're adequately staffed, and so I get that. So in a perfect world, would we have a psych, a counselor, a social worker for X number of kids in every building? Absolutely. You know, likewise with all these positions, we'd have a math coach in every building, we would have a GT person in every building, we can't do that, so it is a matter of trying to prioritize which one. So I agree, we'll have a detailed report about where we are at, but I think in comparison to everything else, we are better staffed there than in some of the other high needs.
I'm just saying, before we spend a hundred grand on cameras, could we hire a social worker, would that make us a better district? I think possibly, or a psych, you know what I mean, that's, you know, right now we have one social worker in the high school that's supposed to time with,
MG twenty one.
With MG twenty one, and, you know, I don't know that people are getting the services they need to get, which, which expand a lot more than, you know, locking the door, so.
Let's make it clear, we're not spending a hundred thousand dollars on cameras.
Five hundred a camera for six buildings is. Right, five hundred a camera for six buildings is, it adds up pretty quick.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's a hundred grand, but even if it's fifty, fifty grand could buy us a position that could do more for all the kids than.
You're right, I mean, it's the balance between those things and classroom needs, no doubt.
I just want to make sure that they are interrelated, they aren't completely standardized.
Carrie?
The other question that I have when looking at a proposal for new position is having a history in the district, knowing things were cut, how to justify adding new positions as opposed to restoring things that had been cut? And I don't have an answer for that, I just wanted to frame it that way as a question about, and looking at this without the context of saying, but what did we cut? And should those things be reinstated prior to a brand-new thing?
Well, I'll just tell you, my approach to it is, I wasn't here when the cuts were made, I'm certainly aware of some of them, but we're looking at evaluating what our current staffing is and what our current needs are. I will say this honestly, there were some cuts that made, that should have been made, that we were overstaffed in some areas. Other places, no, we had to make cuts we didn't want to make. And so it is a matter of evaluating every position and not automatically going to a list of cuts and say, let's bring them back, is evaluating our current needs are. In some cases, those needs have changed as well from where they were five years ago. So that's the approach that we've taken, is that we evaluate every position, identify our needs, and then as we have more resources, balancing that idea of adding positions versus, you know, the other things that we have to spend.
Because I didn't, that's an awesome answer, because I didn't have a sense that there's like a list on the side of the things that we cut that we really shouldn't have or didn't want to, and those should be brought back. I haven't seen something like that, so I can weigh it against, well, here's the proposal, something new, but what about the things that we cut that no one really thought we should have been cutting? How do I say, now's the time to bring that back, maybe instead of a elementary math coach, for example?
Sure.
I mean, I can't, you know, this is all I've been offered, is a choice to approve this, but if there was money for three point oh FTE, is this, are these the ones to add?
Susan?
Well, I think that's where we rely on our staff to bring these forward, and so I think that's, they have the expertise that we don't have. But it brings to mind something that has come up in the last year, which is the IMC paraprofessionals, and I don't know if that's still on a list somewhere too, because I'm also aware that because the referendum just passed, we're still prioritizing, and we're going to be prioritizing over the next year. So this list isn't the be-all and-all, I mean, we may be adding some different people, but I think it's really true that the needs change and the priorities change. Certainly, they've changed in the last 10 years, and the needs of kids have changed, our demographics have changed. We just, you know, it goes to what Jeff was talking about too. So I think it would be inappropriate to automatically go back and put those, all those positions back for exactly the reasons you said, as well as these new, these other changes. But some of them, like that position at the time, we thought we could cut, and it's what I kept hearing, I mean, the IMC paraprofessionals, and now when I hear the technology people talk, I think, well, maybe that's something that should be reevaluated, so I'd like that to stay on a list somewhere too.
That is a perfect example, and I'll use that to talk about how we do the evaluation. That is being reevaluated right now, and that's, a good example of something that we're not going to just bring back because it was cut.
Right.
So the question I have is, okay, how is that going to change our service for kids if we bring back EAs for library? And so actually, Lisa's working with the library, being a specialist right now, to answer that exact question. And when I get that, that here's how we can provide increased services, if that's the case, then yes, we will look to do that.
I appreciate that approach also, that is thoughtful, and I just, yeah.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I think you and I talked about this, Dan, but we have in here now a TOSA in each school, and we have, and then the middle school and the high school, the TOSA is a coach.
Yes.
Basically, right? So we change, but the functions are roughly the same?
Well, except for what you heard last week, that the TOSAs are doing more than just coaching.
Yeah, okay.
But that part of their job is similar.
But they are a professional development and instructional improvement type of thing, and I think that, I think the board needs to understand that some of this stuff came out of our teacher compensation concept, that we could improve the quality of instruction by embedding more people locally that can work on a confidential basis with our teachers. And I'm pleased that that concept is in the budget.
One thing I'll answer, we do have draft job descriptions, I'll make sure I share it the next board meeting. Because we're all certified staffing positions, job descriptions actually have to be approved by the board statutorily, so those will come forward as well at some point soon.
And these are teaching positions?
Teaching, correct.
Say that again loud.
Yeah, so everything in here is certified, meaning teaching positions.
Okay, I'm looking ahead on the agenda, I noticed on our new business, I don't know, we might have some staff, might have to say, we're using the T4K provider contracts, so I would, without objection, I'd like to move on, skip down to the new business is our next item, because it's getting fairly lit, which will be the discussion of possible approval of the 1617 T4K provider contracts.
And actually, I'll let Jared take the lead on this, because he was instrumental in preparing the contracts, and it is primarily a status quo, we made some slight adjustments in the actual contract language, but we are looking to renew our relationship with all of our community sites. And so with that, you see the attach of the actual, you know, contracts. I don't know that there's anything real substantial that, you know.
We just cleaned up language to make it clear. Nicole Tavado was able to review that for us, and was able to ask questions to help our understanding from a legal standpoint. We cleaned that up, we didn't change any things stating that they have to pay for something more, or we have to pay for something more, which is to me, a more cleaner contract. Since I've been here, the contract was originally reviewed by Boardman and Clark, and then we haven't had a review for, you know, at least four or five years, and so we just figured it would be a good opportunity to have it updated. But like Dan had stated, we are planning on offering to all three sites, Kids Safari, Learning Ladder in Cottage Grove, and IHM here in Menona, and then we also offer a 4K program within our school at Winnicqua and Taylor Prairie.
And of course, Connie coordinates the program, so we ask her to stay.
That's right.
To be here available for questions.
Susan?
I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the contracts for the 201617 school year with Kids Safari, Learning Center, Learning Ladder, preschool, and childcare, and a part of the primary school as presented.
Second?
They're moved to second, any further discussion? That's easy.
Did Connie have, I mean, she poured things, she stayed the whole time. Did you have any comments that you wanted to add to this?
No, I'm happy with that.
She's amazed we did this.
Okay, good.
Just like a wife and you.
Yeah, because I mean, do you stay, did you have anything you wanted to say otherwise?
No, we're just working with enrollment right now, and it continues to grow every day.
This looks like an easy one, we could have done it at seven o'clock.
I know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Karen.
Thank you all at the moment.
Thanks for hanging in and doing this stuff, this is, this is great for your stuff.
Given that it is after 10 o'clock, I am reluctant to start on the strategic planning process. I would like to know what people think, if we should move on.
Thumbs up.
Wait for next meeting.
I always have the same thought, yeah.
Eric can finish.
I'm good with that.
Okay, fair enough. Future agenda items?
Put it up higher on the schedule next time.
Yeah, we will, probably, hopefully we'll have a shorter, shorter schedule. Future agenda items, actually, the only thing is.
Peter, before, would you, yeah, I totally apologize, but, and I know it's somewhere in that material, would you give us just a schedule, because we're the one who's throwing you off by delaying you, so.
For the next one, how will you see them there, kind of a timeline?
I know Joanne had it last, remember, Peter, pretty good in a time, so that we know that we're throwing the process off, it's not you.
Well, I can give the quick, I promise, only 30 seconds. Administratively, we can start on some of the work, obviously we want to get the board feedback. We actually are, Joanne had to cancel the meeting with us, she had an unexpected, you know, thing come up as well, so. But we'll, we'll do kind of our background prep work as we, you know, have this discussion with the board. So, but yeah, I'll give you that detailed schedule. So we're a little bit behind schedule as well on our own end.
If we need to have a special meeting to do this, and do it in an hour, an hour and a half, and just do it, and have Joanne here and Jack to lead us through that, then let's just do that, because it's hard to do good, solid board stuff like approving budgets, and then conceptually get into this and still spend the kind of time we need to, because this is what drives us.
Yeah.
We'll look at the next agenda and see how it steps up and make that decision.
And maybe you want Joanne to be here to show us how, because again, the system is part of what we need to learn, and how she and Jack is the system.
I'll go over this list with Dan's, this is the start of the new board year, and come up with things, and see what Dan's agenda is going forward. The thing I did add on here is, in that next meeting, I'd like to have a, talk about our board, our, sorry, our committee structures, make sure, see if there's any tweaks or anything we want to make back, and we can, we can reach agreement, for example, about extending negotiations, I'm sorry, the referendum committee, and see what it goes, so if you have any thoughts about that, that'll be in our next meeting.
Because that was an ad hoc committee, was the thing. That referendum committee was an ad hoc committee appended to the community and public relations committee.
And then, right, look at the charge, and then look and make any adjustments to the other committees if we want to make. Is anything else burning?
Just on the future agenda items, we do have personnel committee scheduled for next Monday, and so I did set an agenda with our past chairperson, so hopefully you can appoint that committee prior to Monday, so we can meet.
Or why don't you just maintain, why don't you maintain the current committees until the next main meeting, and then they'll all be appointed. Because Susan and I are supposed to be meeting, hey, if somebody wants to come for three and a half hours and do.
That's fine, Susan, forget it.
Jump in.
We'll meet, they can come and arrest us.
That's right, we'll keep the same meetings until we get a chance to, until after the next meeting, we'll have a little discussion, and then we'll.
Okay, we'll go to jail.
And then I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion moved at 10:14.
They're second. All in favor?